Good evening. Welcome to the July 17, 2025 Town of Fairfax Planning Commission meeting. It is 7:00 PM and we will begin. This meeting is being held in person at the Fairfax Women's Club at 46 Park Road in Fairfax. The meeting is also being held virtually on Zoom. It is also broadcast on channels 27 and 29 and livestreamed on the town's website with the address available in the agenda. Can I get a roll?
Swift?
Here.
Petrone?
Here.
Jansen?
Here.
Bela is absent. Newton?
Here.
Chair Pfeffer?
I'll read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Planning Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Planning Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Conduct: All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should: 1. Limit your presentation to three minutes; 2. Provide comments by email as described in the agenda; 3. State your views and concerns succinctly; and 4. Submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email@planning@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Do we have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. First on our agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission may do so via email, in person, or via Zoom in the manner described in the agenda. Presentations will be limited to three minutes. And we are ready if there's anyone in the room who wishes to speak on non-agenda items.
I see no hands online for non-agenda items either.
We will move on then to the rest of the agenda. There are no calendar items this evening, and so first we will take a public hearing item number one, 36 Tamalpais Road, application number 2515. And can we please have the staff report?
The project proposes an approximately 107 square foot expansion and remodeling of an approximately 858 square foot one-bedroom, one-bathroom residence to create a new art studio room and a new hallway with a laundry closet. The new floor area would be approximately 965 square feet. A utility sink would be installed in the new art studio room. The bathroom would be relocated to give it an exterior window and natural light, and the rear deck would be expanded from approximately 128 square feet to approximately 212 square feet. All exterior finishes and materials would match the existing house. The addition would reach a maximum height of approximately 20 feet, and the expanded deck would be elevated approximately eight feet above the ground. The property is approximately 4,500 square feet and is irregularly shaped with an average slope of approximately 32%. The existing house was constructed in 1920. There is a legal non-conforming single-car carport at the front of the property in the western side yard, and that encroaches into the western side yard and combined side yard setbacks. A legal non-conforming approximately 120-square-foot detached garden shed with no utilities is located in the rear yard and encroaches into the rear yard setback. So the existing house meets the combined front-rear and individual side setbacks, the FAR lot coverage and height requirements. The only objective zoning standards the house does not meet is the combined side yard setback. Project implementation would not change the property's setbacks nor increase the building height. The addition would follow the line of the house on the western side, and the expanded deck would follow the line of the house on the eastern side, resulting in the construction of a minimal amount of floor area within the combined side yard setback. The project requires approval of a conditional use permit for the expansion of a house on a substandard lot. It also requires approval of a combined side yard setback variance for expanding a small portion of the house into the combined side yard setback. Findings can be made to grant the variance and the conditional use permit and the combined side yard setback variance. The addition is small in nature. The exterior materials would match the existing house, and the property would maintain a floor area and FAR similar to comparably sized neighboring properties, consistent with the intent of applicable general plan policies. The addition would comply with the combined front-rear and individual side setbacks, as well as the FAR lot coverage and height requirements of the town code, and would maintain similar setbacks, FAR lot coverage and height, as other single-family residential properties found throughout the neighborhood and throughout town. Views between the project site and the two neighboring properties on either side would not increase over what is existing, and the current level of privacy would be maintained. The proposed project would increase the functionality of the house, resulting in equal or better development of the property. Because of the narrow approximate 50-foot width of the property, the siding of the existing house, and the approximate 32% average slope, the strict application of the combined side yard setback requirement would deprive the property owner of other privileges enjoyed by other property owners in the vicinity and under identical zone classification. Many properties in the project vicinity and in the Fairfax Manor subdivision where the property is located have portions of structures within the combined yard setback as they historically developed prior to the town's adoption of side yard setbacks in 1961. The small amount of floor area within the combined side yard setback would not be anticipated to be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property in the vicinity. The only specific condition from an outside agency is a requirement for sewer lateral permitting, testing, and certification from Ross Valley Sanitary District. And that concludes the staff report. And staff recommends the commission consider the application and approve the resolution setting forth the findings for approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner?
I have one question. On the side setbacks, so if I look at it, sorry, excuse me. The extension of the house has a, on the left side of the property, varies from 12 to 14 feet. So the current number that's listed in the table is basically because one of the side setbacks is zero because of the carport. If you look at the house itself, it would be 16 or something like that at the narrowest, and the extension itself would be 19 on average. So it looks worse in the table than it is in reality. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I didn't see it mentioned in the staff report, but just to confirm, there's no new exterior lighting as a part of the project? Is that correct?
Exterior lighting?
Yes.
No.
No. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner?
And because it's not more than a 50% remodel, we don't have the dark sky compliant requirement that we would for another type of application, right?
Dark sky would apply to this as well. It's just they weren't proposing any lighting, so.
All right.
But we can add that condition in, is if there's a concern that, you know, any future lighting, to make sure it's compliant, we can modify the resolution.
Okay. And then I also want to follow up on the Table 1 with all the setback information, and this is more education for me, because I ask these questions all the time. They're the same questions. I ask them all the time. I can't figure it out, but I think I'm getting there. And on each of these columns, we have front setback, rear setback, combined, blah, blah, blah. I'm wondering, could we add to the top in the future minimum front setback, minimum rear setback, minimum combined front-rear setback, minimum side setbacks, minimum combined side setbacks, maximum FAR, maximum lot coverage, and maximum height to the top of that, you know, just minimum and maximum to the top of those columns? And one of the reasons is my math never adds up, right? So required permitted six-foot front setback and 10-foot rear setback minimums, and then combined 35. And I have to constantly remind myself that that means your minimum combined is 35. And so if you choose the 10-foot rear, you have to have a 25-foot front, not a six-foot front, right? Okay. And then, okay. So the other question I have for you has to do with your references to the remodel addition artist studio as an addition, remodel, extension, and the reference to the deck as the extension, the deck extension. And throughout the resolution, these terms are sort of used a little bit loosely, and they get very confusing to me as to whether we're talking about the addition part versus the deck extension part. So when and if we get to the resolution language, I may have some comments about how we phrase those two different parts and what the references are when we get down in the weeds about, okay, this part has this much of a side setback, that part has, you know what I mean? It kind of gets very confusing as we start talking about the parts separately. Does that make sense?
I think so. I mean, maybe if we could, if we go through it, and maybe I could see specifically. So it's just some clarification. The language wasn't clear.
Yeah, maybe if we just use the same phrase to define the addition/remodel/extension, and just maybe call it the addition, and then the deck extension, be very specific and refer to that as the deck extension, and just be consistent with how we use those two. I mean, I just recommend the addition and the deck extension, but we can talk about that. Does that make sense? Okay. And I think that's it. Let me just double check. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
We are ready to move on to public comment. Is the applicant here? Do you want to speak to the project or? Not required, but if you do speak, we ask that you go to the microphone so that it can be. Okay. Anybody?
Susan Adams, I reside at 47 Tamalpais Road. I'm quite familiar with this parcel and this particular home. And I did write a statement that I submitted this morning, and Cara did, you know, confirm that it made it to the record. I just thought I would, which was a very brief statement, but I thought I would sort of summarize my very brief statement. But I wanted to make clear that I'm completely in favor of the proposed project, the remodeling at 36 Tamalpais Road. The project, I find, is an extremely efficient use of the existing space, requiring such a small change for a house that is over 100 years old. And it's very tiny inside, and the changes will have, to me, no visual or environmental impact to the neighborhood. As the staff report has pointed out, the FAR is such a small 0.02 increase, to be negligible in my mind. And even the roof height extension is still below the existing roof line, as I understand from the description. I wanted to say that I find it absolutely remarkable that this designer has been able to take this existing footprint and with very little changes externally, made a much more efficient use internally of the home. And as I said, the required setback variance is not unexpected in our neighborhood. These homes are significantly over, hers is over 100 years old, and designed and built long before the current regulations were in effect. And as I said, I applaud the designer for being able to take this home and make it much more efficient and without impacting the neighborhood in the least. And I want to thank the staff for a very well-written, clear report. Thank you.
Lynn Logier, 32, Tamalpais Road. So I am the immediate neighbor for the project, and I want to say, I want to echo what my friend Susan said, that this is an extraordinarily modest change for a really, really important functional adjustment. And my neighbor is a working artist, and she has struggled with this, having to rent space in San Rafael, and seriously considered whether she should leave the community. And I'm really glad that she's found a designer that can meet her needs and stay in that lovely little house and actually have some visibility on what is an extraordinarily nice garden designed by four owners before, who was a landscape architect, and currently has no visibility from inside the house. So I just want to express my appreciation for all of the commissioners for your public service and your careful evaluation of this, and to the staff for especially putting the variances in context. I remodeled my adjacent home. I was over 50% in 2012, and I had four setback variances, and I stayed under the roof line. So you can see the challenges. Anyway, strong support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If one of you wouldn't mind just hitting the microphone, but thank you. And do we have any raised hands on Zoom?
Chair, I see no hands raised.
Great. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Well, I'll jump in, unless you want to, Robert?
I can start. Yours is longer. Yeah, as I said, to me, it's quite clear. It's a small addition. Basically, the house, the box, get extruded to the back a little bit, shoves the deck apart. Interestingly, because of the size of the lot, the extension itself almost complies with the required combined setbacks. And so to me, based on, you know, this, of course, all these things are given because of the history, including the shed in the back that skews all these numbers, but the house itself, the change to the house itself does really not have any impact, as far as I can tell, on either the public side or the two neighbors on either side. So I would be in favor of this.
I concur with that. I'm in favor of it as well. And the only thing I would do when we get to the reso would be just to add the dark sky complacency in there, just in case things change going forward. It's in the reso, but it's a great project. So I do have some, I'm also in favor. I think this is wonderful. So happy for you. But I do want to clarify the reso by specifying the distinction between the addition and the deck extension. And in the first whereas clause, the application to expand, I would say, the Town of Fairfax received an application from Murto Galena to both, one, expand the approximately 858 square foot single-family residence at 36 Tamalpais Road, and then I changed the word "by" to "with" and approximately 107 square foot addition to an approximately 965 square foot residence, and remodel it to create a new art studio room and hallway with a laundry closet, and two, oh, gosh, to expand the 128-foot rear deck to approximately 212 square feet. And that way, I don't know, throughout, if you want to then look at the references to the addition and the deck expansion, and the first one I noticed, for example, came up under a conditional use permit findings A, and I think this is all in that paragraph down at the bottom of the first page there, the smaller 170 square foot size of the addition, I think that's the right term, and then the proposed exterior finishes and materials would match the existing house and deck, helping the addition and deck expansion blend in with the existing house. The next, down after the reference to the LU123, it says the expanded and remodeled house would be similar, and I'd almost just prefer to say the addition, but I don't really care, would be similar in design, size, and height, et cetera. And then on the next page, there's a paragraph before B, it says, "The project proposes", and I would put a 1 there, "an addition to an existing single-family house." So I delete expansion and remodel. We've already referenced that. "To create a new art studio room, a new hallway with a laundry closet, relocate the existing bathroom to give it light," and "to an expansion of the rear deck", and I'd actually put a period there, and I'd start the whole sentence with "consistent with the general plan residential land use designation for the site," because that applies to both 1 and 2. So I'd start your sentence with "consistent with the general plan residential land use designation for the site, comma, the project proposes, 1," and then the addition and the deck expansion references. And I don't know if you guys want me to do this and just continue down, but that would be my general direction to staff prior to presenting it to the chair for signature. If, would that be clear enough?
Well, I think, so the thought of your comments, I think, is well-understood, but you're changing the text invasively, and that means there's a risk then that it, on another level, becomes confusing. So I think it would be difficult to make a decision now. So maybe what I would suggest is that your comments would be taken in consideration by staff, but we don't force it on them, because otherwise, I think if we go through the whole document, it changes basically every page of the document.
Well, questions about almost every page, so maybe I will just go through. Bear with me if you guys don't mind.
We can. No, sure, if it's important, and if there are important things wrong, we should take a look at it.
All right. Still in that same paragraph.
Can I just jump in? So the sentence that starts with "consistent," that leads the paragraph? Is that what you said? Okay.
Sorry, that would be the lead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it would apply to your number one and your number two. They'd both be consistent with the general plan. Below that, "the addition would follow the line of the house on the western side, and the expanded deck would follow the line of the existing deck on the eastern side, resulting in a small portion of the additional floor area encroaching." Is that referencing the floor area of the addition?
Yes.
How about we say a small portion of the addition's floor area? All right. And then, which if granted, would allow a small portion of the addition to encroach within the combined side yard setback. And so I think that's all clear, that it's just related to the addition. The next paragraph, B, "approval of the CUP to allow both the addition, including the expansion and remodel of the existing house and the rear deck expansion," you know, "to allow both the addition, including the expansion and remodeling of the existing house and the rear deck expansion, would not constitute a grant of special privilege, blah, blah, blah." Then in this paragraph, you say, "as described in response A above." I think that should be paragraph A above.
Would you repeat the last comment?
In the middle of paragraph B, there's a thing that's described in response A above, and it should be paragraph A above. So I think that paragraph C is okay. And paragraph D, again, that typo, it should be refer to the paragraph A above. And here, my question is, is the reference to the proposed addition would comply with the front-rear combined front-rear and individual side yard setbacks? Is all that about just the addition, or is that all about the addition and the deck expansion?
It's just about the floor area created by the addition, not the deck.
Okay. And then again, the phrase additional floor area comes up at the top of page three in paragraph D, a small portion of maybe the addition's floor area. And then in paragraph E, I would delete the word remodeling in that first sentence because it just becomes confusing, because if we're being consistent about just referring to the addition and the deck expansion, we don't need to reference the remodeling there. That might be it. Wait a minute. And then, yeah, my recommendation was put the dark sky at the end, so you don't have to renumber all your paragraphs. And unless anybody objects, I'd make a motion to approve, oh, I don't have the first page. Thank you. Resolution number 202516, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 2515 for a conditional use permit and combined side yard setback variance for the expansion and remodel of the single-family residence at 36 Tamalpais Road with the corrections I've noted.
Right. We have a motion, Newton, second. Jansen, can we do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. There is a 10 day appeals period. Information on the appeals process can be obtained from the town staff. Thank you. And we are ready to move on to public hearing item number two.
Okay, this is 25 Mirna Avenue. This project includes the remodel of portions of the existing house and expansion of the single family home. Removal and replacement of the one car garage with a one car garage and bike storage building. Replacement of the stairway connecting the lower portion of the site with the upper portion of the site. Removal of the existing pool. Removal and replacement of a shade structure. Relocating it on the upper portion of the property. Replacement of a portion of the roof, installing new landscaping, replacement of some of the existing concrete patio and pathways with permeable surface surfaces and the construction of an entry arbor as well as refreshing the exterior siding and paint of the house. Project requires the approval of a conditional use permit, a combined front rear setback variance and a combined side yard setback variance. Staff's able to support all the requested discretionary permits that they're asking for, except for the combined side yard setback variance, because there is room to relocate the proposed replacement shade structure to comply with the minimum 15 foot side yard setback. In fact, the existing shade structure that they're taking down pretty much complies with the requirement. So we weren't able to make findings for that. A neighbor also submitted comments in writing that he was concerned about the proposed palm trees. He believes they're a fire, they're not fire resistant unless they're properly maintained with regular removal of dead material. And he also commented that the pineapple guava plants are not native to California. So we're just pointing that out in case the commission shares the neighbor's concerned, concerns. I know that I believe I forwarded to you later this afternoon, the response from the applicant's landscape architect that didn't really necessarily agree with this neighbor's position and staff had not identified those plants as a problem. So they're not covered in the resolution at all. So if you, if you want to add some things to the resolution, we will understand. Let's see. Anyway, we are recommending that you approve the project by adopting resolution 2025-17. That would conclude.
Thank you.
You have commission, questions for staff from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Swift.
And a couple of questions. On page three of the staff report, paragraph B, it states that with the 35% lot coverage limitation, reducing the lot coverage to 35% by removing much of the pervious surfaces on the site and replacing them, et cetera. Did you mean to say that we were reducing the lot coverage to 37% so that it was almost down to the 35?
Yes, it's being reduced from 55 to 37, which is a really large decrease. So I'll make that correction in the staff report.
And then page six mentions the lighting company that is being used in the staff report says all fixtures are produced by a company, SPJ Lighting, whose fixtures are dark sky compliant. So did you mean to say that all of them are dark sky or that they provide some dark sky compliant lighting?
Well, when I went on to one page of their website, it said all their fixtures were dark sky compliant, but I have to admit that I did not with a fine tooth go through every single. So I think I included the condition in the reso and it's like, we'll, we'll check that at the building permit stage, you know, when we're not covering all these other planning topics.
And then I had kind of a process question dealing with Ross Valley Sanitary District. So it says the proposed garage appears to encroach on the existing private lateral and rerouting the lateral is recommended to facilitate access to the line in case of future lateral failures. And in there, it talked about and it states that the approved building permit application plans must be submitted to Ross Valley Sewer to obtain a sewer permit. So I had a question about the statement, the approved building permit application plans. So wouldn't they? I mean, we're approving this set of plans, but then they're going to go back. They're going to go to Ross Valley Sanitary and potentially come back with changes that would change the plans, correct?
The sewer, the sewer plans. That's correct. But they're not making it a condition. They're just recommending it. So I guess that means that when it goes back to them, who, whichever staff person gets it will be, will have to make the decision whether an accessory structure. You know, it's not like it's the main house that the sewer runs underneath. Maybe it's not going to be that hard to get in and maintain the sewer and they're not going to make them move it, relocate it.
Okay. Sorry. A decision on that would then come back to building, correct? Building would know based on Ross Valley is going to submit something back.
It'll have to be reflected on the plans. So it'll have to be changed to show that.
Okay. Or some statement from Ross Valley saying they're not requiring anything.
Right.
Okay. Those are all my staff questions. Thanks.
I forgot to mention that you guys have a bunch of corrections to the resolution and red line version in front of you.
I have some more questions before we get to that. The, you mentioned, you got an email from one of the neighbors. One of my, I didn't see that email. I saw the response only.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear the first part of what you said.
Sorry. You, you mentioned in the staff report that you did receive an email from one of the neighbors.
Yeah.
Regarding planting, as I understand it. I did see the response, but the original email wasn't in there. I might have it somewhere. I just didn't see it. But so my first question was going to be, did you get responses from any of the neighbors, 403 or 31 regarding the building plan itself?
No.
No. Okay. The second question I have is the flammability of exterior facade materials is not currently wood fire resistance, I should say, is currently not part of the zoning code.
Correct.
Correct. That's not here. Okay. Then I want to understand the, let me, let me give, let me give you the thought. Let's go to the, to the resolution. I probably just roll into that. I have a couple of observations and I probably other commissioners as well. I did look at the changes, the latest version that I have here. The first is quite simple. I think the original item C in the, in the resolution has completely disappeared. And that is the let me take a look at it. That's the geotech. So that is the town of engineer review to geotech. So I think the, under the conditional use permit, A remains as is, B has a change mostly regarding the trees. C has to be reinserted. That's the town engineer review. And then what's listed C is actually D where changes are proposed. And what is D is actually E. Unless it was the intent to completely nix the town engineer review.
This, this is not going to have a, a large amount of excavation. And so that, that condition that got left in was from a past staff report that was having over 100 cubic yards of, of material moved. This site's pretty much already graded and the only new excavation is going to be for the foundation of the accessory structure, the garage storage building and the new little addition where the master bedroom is. So it, it doesn't, we don't, we don't send it out to our contract. Our contract soils engineers, Miller Pacific, it gets reviewed by the engineers at our building plan check. But it's not, we don't require that they have a double review by engineers. It doesn't have.
Okay. So it was intentionally.
Yeah, we intentionally took it out. It was, it was mistakenly left in.
Okay. Then I'll just keep going with the ones I noted down. The change in what is the new C. It now lists that the existing has two parking stalls. However, drawing A100 clearly shows three existing parking stalls. So why is this change?
I'm sorry, you're, so are you?
The, the latest red line, item conditional use permit finding C. The project does not increase the number of bedrooms on site and the increases the existing number of onsite parking spaces from two to three.
Correct.
Drawing A10 shows that there are three existing parking stalls.
Well, okay, let me, uh, when I walked by it the other day, there were only two.
Well, there's, it's in tandem, so you might not see it necessarily, but so that's.
So you're saying that it's already, it's, they already have three there? There was no fence blocking off a paved area and they're, they were trying to say that it's parking?
In the, in the new plan, there will be a fence. In the existing, there's none. Well, based on the, in front of me. A1.
Thread the plans. I'd be glad to make that change to the, for the rest.
Well, it was three and it became two. So I'm trying to understand why.
You mean they're decreasing it? Wait.
You're decreasing.
It is at three now and they're keeping it at three.
Correct. Yeah. And that's originally what it stated. And now it's modified that existing are two. And so I'm just puzzled. I think it's a typo. I'm looking at architectural sheet 1.0.
Did you? Did you go out to the site? Did you?
I did not walk their property. No.
Because I, the survey showed that there's only two parking spaces right now. Well, they did the survey in 2021 and I walked by and it looked like there was just the garage, the garage structure and the I mean, there may have been something back there that I couldn't see.
It's existing. So.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Yeah. So, so you can change that if that, if I made a mistake.
Well, it's just a question, right?
Double check. You might double check with the applicant because there was vegetation there. They put some new fences in and.
It doesn't materially change anything. There are three and there's still three. It's just, the question is why? What's going on? Okay. Understood. Then last one that I have. The, there's a change in the, in the red line version under the variance of findings. There's a number of things that are crossed out. And what is still standing is the combined front rear setback variance. I understand that. I also understand no parking variance is necessary. We just discussed that. I also understand no front setback variance is required, but I do not understand why there is no side yard, combined side yard setback required because the numbers tell you that you do. The combined setback is required is 20 feet. The proposed is seven feet. So you need a variance.
So.
I have a number of questions about that table if we're going to get to that table.
We will. Please let's see one at a time, please.
So there were so many moving parts on this. I may have, I may have missed something. So I, I asked them to move. They're showing, they're showing, they're showing the five foot. Okay. Say that again. So you're wanting, you think it needs a minimum side yard setback?
Yeah, I'm, I'm simple, just looking at the table, right? Combined side setbacks required by towns 20 feet, existing six feet. The new situation gives you seven feet. So you're still short. So you need variance.
So I put, I put a condition in that they had to move the shade structure. I wasn't approving the shade structure. The shade structure is going to have to be relocated to a conforming location and the existing shade structure actually is in a conforming location. So.
But I don't think that changed the numbers. Well, I.
It doesn't. So, okay, maybe this is a better way to explain it. It, it, no new structures are being built in the combined setback. The existing house is what's, is what's making the combined setback not comply. Does that make more sense?
The new parking structure
But, but.
Is, is in the same, is also in the combined side setback.
If you put, if you put the minimum five foot on that side, right? And that, that makes the other side 15. That equals 20, right? So I'm putting the 15 on the side where the ADU is allowed by state law to not pay any attention to our setbacks, right?
Okay.
But the new addition to the house and my, my refusing to approve the shade structure.
Okay, that makes sense.
ADU, I, I made them move that.
Yeah, I get it.
Is very confusing.
Okay. No, it is. That's why it's a question to staff.
Get rid of the combined setbacks.
Yeah. No, now I understand it. I, I, so, so the.
I'm telling you, sometimes I go back and forth in the staff report, like two and three times trying to figure out.
Okay, understood. So then, then that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Patrani?
Just a few questions on landscape. The first is just a process question. So we're being asked to approve a tree removal permit because the tree committee has not yet met on this project, correct?
Correct.
And so what is stopping us from just conditioning our approval upon a subsequent approval by the tree committee? Is that not something that we can do?
So I was, I'm not exactly sure why the language was done this way in the town code. The, the code didn't need to be changed. It could, they could have still said the tree committee needs to give a recommendation, needs to act on the tree. And you say they have to act on the tree committee, the tree removal permits before the planning commission can take action. They said, we're going to make the process simpler. We're going to allow trees that need, that go, that are being removed for a project that goes before the planning commission. We're going to let the planning commission approve those tree removal permits. Okay. But then for some reason, they said, but the tree committee has to make a recommendation. So it, the tree committee is not issuing a tree permit. They're just making a recommendation. And it said, staff is supposed to route the application like they do to the, to the fire department and all the other agencies. But that's not feasible. It's like they have to fill out a tree, tree, tree recommendation form. It's really a tree removal form. Go to the tree committee. And in this case, I just thought they had done it and they had not, right? So it's.
So.
It's interesting. I'm not exactly sure if you're trying to make a process simpler, why you don't just say the, the planning commission gets to approve tree, tree removal permit, but it involves a project.
But I think in part, we had, originally, we had members of like the planning commission and other committees as a part of the tree committee. It also, in this regard, it makes it easier actually for the process to go forward. So the tree committee makes the recommendation. They can't make the decision, but they make the recommendation and then it comes to us for approval. But that's only for things that are going to be part of a planning action. The tree committee stands alone for other things. If I want to remove a tree on, on my property and I'm not doing anything else, they have the approval denial process.
And one of the reasons that we would not approve with a condition that they get the approval from the tree committee is because the tree committee felt bad about putting the kibosh on an entire project if they didn't want to approve the tree being cut down after we've gone through and looked at the plan.
Sure.
So I do. So I do think applicants need to go through that process. And I think for similar reasons, we don't necessarily feel like we have all the right information about the trees.
Or the expertise, right?
And, you know, the, we, we appreciate getting the recommendation of the tree committee. You know, who often will recommend the removal of the tree, you know, unless it's a heritage tree.
Yeah, and, and if these had been heritage trees, I, I would have continued this, if it had been a large oak tree or a redwood, but it's, you know, they're more
But that doesn't preclude us for asking the same type of questions of the applicant if, if we choose to about what is on the landscape plan.
I mean, one tree is coming out because it's, because it's proximity to the new garage structure and the other's in the driveway, so.
And we don't know anything about the maturity of those trees?
Uh, they're, they're mature trees.
Sure, yeah. It's an olive.
But they have, you know, there's more, there are more olive trees. The one tree, ask the owner, the applicant and the owner, because I went out with the building official and we took some measurements and it almost looked like the one, the olive tree was already gone. But, um, because when we measured the driveway, it looked like the driveway could be widened and not run into a tree. But the, the, is that a pear back there? The pear is definitely there and there's a couple more behind it. So there's still going to be some tall pear trees out there. Even with the removal of
But again, those are questions for the applicant when we get to that point.
Staying on landscape, question for staff. Is there anything in our zoning ordinance, excuse me, specifically requiring native and fire resistant planting?
No, it's just in the general plan, open space.
It's just in the general plan, not in the zoning ordinance?
We also have in the tree ordinance, and I don't have it with me, there is some discussion there as well as to types of plants and all. But I don't have it in front of me, so I can't speak to it. But it does address those things.
And we just worked on the
It requires certain types of landscaping materials? It specifically states that things shall be only replaced with natives?
I don't have it in front of me. I didn't bring it.
Well, we just worked on the general plan amendments that the town approved last night. And that included language about the fire resistant trees being encouraged wherever possible and, and native flora as well, I think.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, it's in the general plan, but hasn't been gotten into the zoning ordinance yet and okay, the only place that I could find it in the, in the, in the general plan, it's called the open space element, right? And so to me, you know, you're already in a developed community. It's like people, oftentimes the planning commission will approve on a developed site that's surrounded by houses and streets, trees and shrubs that are not natives. If they really want people, us to enforce something like that, they need to take the general plan policy and put it in the zoning ordinance. They're saying you cannot plant anything but native.
But again, we don't have the tree code in front of us to look at what it says, but
And the tree code.
But we can, we can deal with that during perhaps discussion or questions for the applicant.
Okay, if you're concerned enough about it, I'd be glad to look it up. But you do have the authority to require at this point, if you'd like to, in the resolution.
That's it for me, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner. I have a number of questions. Okay. So when we go to the setbacks far coverage height table in the staff report, again, the whole, let's put minimum, 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 maximum, maximum, maximum in the future. Now, on the bottom row, proposed, there's a 10-foot front setback. There's no change to the rear setback, so that means a three-foot rear setback. And that would be a combined 13 feet, correct? Thank you, all right. So, at one point, uh, somewhere on page four, I don't know, there's all these references, the bottom of on page four to the existing side setback. And there's a reference to a three-foot existing side setback. And you've got two-foot and four-foot referenced as the side setbacks. And I'm like, where'd the three? And a lot of the time I was getting confused because we have south setbacks and north setbacks instead of side setbacks and front and rear setbacks. And please don't use directions and talk about north, say, say front setback, say rear setback, don't say north. Because then I gotta go figure out which of the north is, whether it's the side or the front, you know?
Well, I always, I'm never sure what to do about the side setbacks. Because if I just refer to side setbacks, you're gonna, not gonna know which side of the house. And sometimes I get calls from neighbors, from planning commissioners that haven't looked at the plans yet. So I use north because it's the north. It's the north side that's three.
All right, there's a reference on page four to the south setback, having a required 15-foot south setback. And I was like, which one is that? Because I don't see 15 foot and it must be that whole combined five and 15 thing that you're talking about.
Right, and what's making it confusing is the state allows ADUs to not comply with any of our setbacks. So the ADU is actually maintaining a four-foot setback on the one side where the house has to maintain a 15-foot minimum side setback.
I do think there's a reference to a three-foot setback from the north side.
Yeah, there's one, there's one corner of the house that I thought was three, but I might have said four. Shall I scale it?
So
The rear is definitely three. I, I'm looking at what I wrote on the plans. The north is three feet at the one corner of the house is three feet.
And north is a side setback.
Yes.
Three feet at the corner, yeah.
And then the required setback on the other side is 15 feet. The addition to the master bedroom is going to comply with the minimums and the combined. And it's only the shade structure that's encroaching into that 15-foot side setback, which is
And which do you list first, the north or the south in your side setbacks column? Because right now you have two feet and four feet. You don't reference three feet.
I don't know, we've been having so many problems with this table, I don't really think we should just lose it. But anyway, let's see, so three feet and three feet. So if you look the garage right now, I think is two feet. So the existing is, so that's gotta be the north side. And four feet is the ADU, so that is the south side.
But that's really three.
Well, so the garage then gets removed. The garage that's maintaining a two
But I'm just looking at existing. I'm just looking at the existing row. Okay?
Okay, which is right, right now is two, existing is two and four. The existing garage is
I thought you just said you measured and you wrote three feet on the north side.
It's confusing what you were asking. So the existing, the existing garage, if you look at page A1.1, it shows the existing garage. That's the, that's the closest structure to the north side property line. And it's approximately two feet.
Okay.
The other side, the new ADU, which went in long after the house was built, right? That only maintains a four-foot setback from the south side property line.
Okay.
Now, when the garage gets removed and moved five feet, then the house becomes the closest portion to the side, to the north side property line at three feet.
All right, so on page four of the staff report, the first paragraph about the setback regulations. It says, the new garage that maintains the minimum 10-foot front yard setback for street pronages on corner lots will, along with the main house, which is only three feet. Ah ha.
Yeah, that weird one corner of the, of the rear of the house, the rear wall of the house is remaining. You know, they're leaving it and it's only three feet from the
The main house is a three-foot setback from the north side property line.
Oh, so did I say north side property line? I should have said
So in the next paragraph, this will maintain along the main house that has only a three-foot setback from the north side property line, a combined side yard setback of only 18 feet. It's a good thing these tables confuse me because I force, I force you to like tell me, explain it to me.
Need to get rid of these combined setbacks. Telling you, you gotta get rid of them.
All right, well, I will stop beating that horse
That has
For a minute and go to, some of the other questions that I had have been answered with the revisions that you submitted to the, to the REZO. But under conditions of approval, you have paragraph one is the project being based on the following
And you say where you're at? Are you on the REZO or the staff?
I'm on page four of the original REZO, but let me look at the redlined REZO. Under, okay, it's the bottom of page three on the redline version. You've got a paragraph one that references the plans. And then you have a paragraph two that basically says, here's all the conditions of approval for this decision. And then you've got some colon and you've got A through I.
Excuse me, you said page three, that's not my page three.
Okay.
Yeah, there shouldn't be a one, there shouldn't be a one. The design review should just be
And then you go to the next page.
So, right, these numbering are all off because the way it looks like it ought to be organized is
No, it's not, no.
The project is approved pursuant to these plans. Here's all the conditions that apply. And then you've got before the building permit is issued. And then you've got during construction. And then you've got before the occupancy permit is issued. And you've got these, all this stuff. And, you know, so I have a recommendation for renumbering because I actually went through and tried to figure out what made sense. And sorry, I didn't have time to sit down with you and go through it. But I have a whole process for renumbering that I think will make some sense when we get to that. But I just wanted to get your feedback. Do you think that that would be a good idea?
I'm agreeing on page three that there shouldn't dot be a number under design review. It should just be its own section. The project depicted in the following plans comply with the design review criteria set forth in town code such and such. The art, architectural
Oh, wait, wait, now I've lost you.
I think it should, okay, well, we're back to where you first talked about how the one started under design review on page three.
I was looking, oh, I was looking at the conditions of approval at the bottom of page three.
Oh, so you didn't have it, well, now I have a correction to the one above that. There shouldn't be a one. Those two sentences should be combined into one. The project is depicted in the architectural plan pages prepared by
I don't care about that one, that one's fine. But
Well, we
If you want, what I care about is you've got conditions of approval.
You do know that this is the format we've been using for years.
I'm sorry, I don't think the
No, no, no problem changing it, it's just this is
I don't think the conditions of approval Is the format we've been using, is what I'm telling you.
Okay, but
Okay, because you've got a lot of repetitive stuff in here that comes back at the end when you have the Fairfax building, you know, what do you have down here? Fairfax Public Works Department is all the same things that you have up in the beginning in the conditions of approval. So when and if we get to a REZO, I can help kind of walk through what I think this should look like, just in terms of numbering of paragraphs.
Okay, and let me ask you a question. So there are some standard conditions that literally were here when I started, right? And then we've started pulling out what the different agencies specifically stayed at the end. But if you prefer that they're mixed in, anyway, you can tell us when we get to the REZO.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that sounds like a plan. Okay, those are all my questions for staff.
I have one more. The FAR is existing is 36 and says no change. But both the garage and the house get bigger. Not by much, but they do get bigger. So could you explain that?
Variation, I'll think about a bunch of applications. Sometimes if, if the area is not getting much bigger, you still get the 35, so I'm going to have to crunch the numbers, you know what I mean? You know, sometimes you can have like 199 square feet is what it's increasing. Doesn't always bump them up to another FAR. But, um, let's see.
Sure. And then I'm looking at the architect's drawings. This is A000. There are different numbers listed.
Text
Sheet A0 dot zero, the zoning information table in the lower right corner. It excludes the ADU.
So lot, lot coverage includes it includes the parking structure. So.
The site coverage, yes, no, I was talking about the FAR.
Yeah, accessory structures. I always get confused if it's the, if it's the, you're, you're exempt from adding a certain percent, you're exempt from adding 500 square feet
For the
For a single family home. Is that from lot coverage or from FAR? I can never remember.
Okay, so the garage doesn't
Is there, is there an issue? It's still, it's still far, are you thinking it might, it might go over 40?
Hmm, I doubt it, but it's, it's 36, it's getting close.
I better look that up.
Yeah, if, if the garage doesn't count, you're not going to go over 36. It's, that's because the house is minor, that's the bathroom and a little bit. And I think you're correct, up to 500 square feet of the garage is excluded. Yeah, so that's then the explanation. I'm not sure why the architectural drawings show something different, but it's
It does, because our code is so complicated and things don't cross reference each other. And so I, I believe the architects always do the best they can. But when I worked with the code for a lot of years and I still have to check things because it's very, very, um, it's not easy to work with this document. Let's see, floor area ratio. It says that floor area only excludes basements, attics, open porches, balconies, terraces. But let's go to the actual FAR section. These are the kinds of things that if you guys could try to get to them earlier, we wouldn't have to keep people waiting through them. But anyway, just give me a minute. But anyway, just give me a minute. Yeah, so it says that the floor area only excludes one accessory structure of 120 square feet or less. One accessory structure. So it doesn't exclude garages. So anyway.
But a question on, on that, when we talk about floor area ratio, are we talking more about living space versus garage? And I know the garage does have exemptions for lot coverage.
Right.
And I think it's the 500 feet, but if you're not using the garage at all for living space.
It doesn't say you have, you can't count it. It's, it's not listed as being something you can ignore. So we do what the code tells us to do. I mean, you guys can change it, but that's the way it reads right now.
I have another question. If you're pleased. Yeah. Lynda, as part of the design review, I'm interested in the findings regarding the garage specifically. I mean, it seems just like a flat wall, no articulation. I mean, it matches the ADU's flat, no articulation wall. But I'm wondering if the odds standards, if that's in conformance with those odds standards in that sense.
The odds standards, I thought mostly applied to larger projects. They're questioning.
Yeah, I don't think.
You know, the single family garage matches the ADU, which I guess we have no control over. So it's real, you know, you know, visual things, it's all personal, right? It's like you're going to find a million people that love that, the, the clean look and you're going to find people that like the older homes in Fairfax. So, you know, it's, it's personal and you guys unfortunately are in the situation where you need, you can vote, you can say, we would like to have more articulation, we want to have, you can continue this and ask for a slope on the garage, you can, right? But your code is pretty vague and so it's, you know, we do the best we can. If it looks like the garage, like the ADU, you know, are we going to require that the garage be, the cost be added to the garage to match the old 100-year-old house? I did not feel that that was something that was appropriate, but it's why I don't have the authority to approve this. It's coming to you for a design review permit.
But I thought the odds only applied to multifamily homes and not single family homes. But then there's the design review piece that's separate.
Right, the Fairfax Code 1704020 is the standard that we're supposed to be using to evaluate the design review. And our resolution cites that code standard and says it meets that standard. And that standard references the generic language about, let me pull it up.
You know, some changes were made to the findings in the code that was trying to, you know, reference the state housing changes that we had to make to get our housing element certified. And so I'm not sure careful thought was given to how clear to make it that the odds wasn't necessarily going to comply to every project.
Well, that's fine. I just wanted to understand it because right now there's a reference to the elements of height, building mass, building setbacks, arrangement on the site, exterior building material, signs, landscaping, pedestrian access, and appurtenances for which objective design standards have been established in this title. And so I don't know if a garage is an appurtenance and if there are objective design standards established for that, if it is an appurtenance.
I don't believe they, they apply to you, Jeff, that they don't apply to single family homes, do they?
I don't think they, it was intended not to apply to single family homes.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Yeah.
Because then I think we're left in terms of the design review with all those other criteria that I just read out. Thanks.
Yep.
And maybe I need to include what I've included in other staff reports was I state not, not all the, not all the criteria always apply to single family homes. So we're just going to cover the ones that do. I'll try to do that going forward.
Thank you.
Well, last long comment, just to clarify for the commission, I found the answer to the FAR. The, yeah, there are some minor additions, but there's also structures removed, pool house, shed. So that's why the balance, it comes from the architectural drawings, the balance is, there's like a hundred square foot difference, doesn't change the FAR. Sorry.
Thank you. Yep. Great, I think we are ready then to open public comment. Is the applicant or architect here and do you want to come up and speak to the project?
Good evening, I'm Lisa Panazzo. My husband, Jeff Logan, and I are the architects for the owner, Alex Martin, who's here. And our landscape architect, Daphne Edwards, is also here. I'm happy to clear up any confusions around setbacks because this was something we spent quite a bit of time on. To be brief about one specific aspect that wasn't addressed, I think clearly, the house does not sit parallel to any of the property lines. So we've noted the very tightest setback from the existing structure, which if we could use an average, we would be easily compliant. The house is, exceeds the required setback in most places, but there are two spots where we are quite tight to the required setback and missed the five-foot minimum setback by a couple feet. So both on the north and on the, I'm going to be as confused as you are about west and east, but on the east setback, we also have one point where we are three feet and on the north, we have a point where we're three feet. But we also exceed that minimum setback through most of both of those building walls. So that's how we are trying to address that requirement by moving the addition further away from the southern property line. We're able to also address any questions around plant materials. So if you have any specific questions about the architecture right now, I can answer them or.
I had a quest, question on the landscape plan. You've identified two trees for removal. One's the pear tree, one's the olive tree. The olive tree seems to be in the middle of the construction, right? But what was the reason for wanting to remove that one pear tree?
Well, I can let Daphne come up and address it, but we believe it's within the fire, the safe fire zone between the, the rear of the new garage. It creates a, more of a fire risk if we leave it where it is. I don't know if it's just the canopy.
Hi, my name is Daphne Edwards. I'm the landscape architect on this project. I'm also a Fairfax resident. Thank you all for the work you do. The second tree is actually not a pear tree. It was mislabeled on the survey, but I don't think that's particularly relevant. It is within five feet of the proposed garage and the Marin Fire Safe Recommendations propose the elimination of plant material within five feet of any structures.
So you're looking at it as wanting to remove it because it's in zone zero?
Correct.
Okay. Do you recall what type of tree it is, if it's not a pear?
It's a camphor tree.
I'm sorry?
Camphor, it's a camphor tree.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and one other quick question, has the fencing been updated? So do you already have the cedar fencing around some of the property?
We have replaced the front fence along Mirna Avenue.
Okay.
For a portion of the front property line.
Yes, Commissioner.
How does, does the applicant feel about the staff's recommendation for the shade structure being moved? Could you guys comment on that?
We prefer the proposed location. It will provide more shade, given the orientation of the sun on the site. Moving it to the location of the existing shade structure, which is to be removed, will still provide shade, but not as much. And part of the desire of the landscape plan is to, we're seeking to cool down this site. It's in a very hot part of Fairfax, so we're looking to give the site as much shade as possible. And that was actually the reason for the recommendation of the palm trees, to try and shade the ground plane.
Thanks. And can you confirm that olive tree, was that in the parking space? And, okay, so functionally, it's like two spaces now. Got it. Okay, thank you. I think unless you have anything else that you'd like to add, we can take other public comment if you.
I just wanted to add that we did a very careful job of trying to make sure that we were in compliance with fire recommendations. All but two of the plants on the recommended list of plants is on the list of fire-safe Marin plantings. Ironically, there are very few native plants on that list. This is going to be an issue that we really need to begin to address collectively. I think there's some misconceptions about the ease of finding native plant material that is fire resistant. We live in a hot, dry interior valley and the native plants to our ecosystem are fire-prone, period. So to use native plantings here, you really have to go with riparian plants and plants that are native to the coastal zone where we have fog, a fog regime. And to make those plants happy in Fairfax, we have to provide a lot of supplemental irrigation, which would put them out of compliance with the water efficiency landscape ordinance. So we're in a little bit of a bind there. But once again, all of the plants, with two exceptions on the proposed planting list, are fire compliant. And five of them are native. And we could try and bump up that number, but I'm not sure how useful that will really be. Happy to answer other questions about that.
Thank you. I don't think we have any other questions right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the room would like to speak to this project? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, I see no hands online.
Before we move to discussion, did anyone have any follow-up questions for the architect? I know the landscape is, okay. Then I will bring this project back to the commission for discussion and deliberation.
So regarding the landscaping, I do have concerns with the palms on the landscaping. They can be hazardous if they are not maintained. They're on the Fire Safe Marin's website as hazardous because of the prawns, the fronds becoming dry. And the concern I have with them is that, you know, we're not looking at a parcel that has existing vegetation that may include those. We're actually looking at redoing the landscaping and putting them in. So we're adding a plant that has some fire concerns. And it may not be that, it could be this property owner that takes care of them, but this property owner may not be there all the time and, and we're left with a parcel then that has palms in there that may become an issue. So I would want to look to changing those out on the, on this property. I don't have concerns about the vegetation not all being natives. And again, the Fire Safe Marin list is only a partial list and you, and you know, and there's other sources that have fire hazardous and, and fire and good plants on them. The native part of it to me isn't as much of a concern, you know, and the variety's good, that fits in, you know, low water. But the palms do concern me on that. So I would want to look, if the rest of the commission approves that, to relooking the landscaping plan that's provided.
Yeah, I'd like to point out something different. So we're looking for a front rear combined setback variation that's driven by the garage. I would like to, Commissioner, to look at sheet A5.1. It's also the part that's been puzzling me a little bit. I do have a concern with that. So if you look at the, the rendering shows it best, that's A5.1, the top rendering, which is rendering to the street view. So that's going to be the facade along Smirna. So on the right is the existing ADU. The garage is on the left. And that's an odd addition because it is, it's what, it's a triangle-shaped piece on the side. So it only holds one car, but the building on the back is almost 20-foot wide and on the front it's even more. There's storage and there's bikes in there, so that makes sense. But a triangular space is very inefficient and the result is, is that the front facade becomes incredibly long and it's fully flat in line with the ADU. I think, and there's another rendering at A5.2, I don't think that that's a good representation of that front. It is setback 10 feet, which is correct. There's nothing wrong with that, but it's still, this building still needs variance because of the garage, because of the combined. So I would be inclined to request that triangular shape gets cut down. And as with every triangle, the facade exponentially expands if you do a triangular shape. So the total facade has now a length of 28 feet. I think if you cut off that triangle tippy where you couldn't put a cabinet anyway, that reduces that length.
I'm sorry, so what diagram are you talking about changing that triangle-shaped garage?
It's the, the triangle, the triangular shape part of the garage, which has the three clear story windows in it. That extends very far. That's so if the garage door is 16 feet or 18 feet, you can see it. It keeps going forever because of the triangular shape. I would recommend that that be cut down. You cut off the, most of the triangle, maybe not everything, but most of it. Because that's the most, if you go and look around on Smirna, that's going to be in your face. And it is very long. And it is the piece of the building that needs the variance for the rear front setback combined.
It's the part of the project that makes me not want to approve it because the ADU's flat, long facade is then, I mean, you know, the existing garage is so quaint when you look at that house. To me, it just destroys the facade by changing that to look at the similarly long, flat facade. I, I don't feel like I could make the findings to approve the design review of that.
I don't feel like I could make the findings to approve the design review of that.
Sorry, forget the tension away from the palms. That's an important part too.
Just a question for you, Commissioner Jansen. If we, you know, removing the part of the garage that you mentioned removing, looking at, for me, looking at the drawings, while that does go into the setback, I don't, I think there would still be this corner of the house that's going in. So it would not, they would still need the variance, right?
Well, the house is not affecting that, I think. So the combined is the front rear only that we're looking at. So the front setback's 10 feet, that's by itself compliant. The rear setback is like three feet, it's not. But even if it was 10 feet, it would still not be because one of the two should be more to make the combined one. And it's hard to make a judgment because the ADU bursts right through that and makes it all weird. So I do understand the architectural desire to line it up. And because the front is 10 feet, that by itself is not too close to the curb.
Yeah.
But as, and that's why I pointed to the renderings. It keeps going forever because of the triangular shape of the building. Making that a more square building will significantly reduce the element or the impact, the wall along Mirna. It's not as quaint as the existing, but it would still be more proportional. So I think that doing that, you know, one way is to say, no, we can't do it. I would say by just reducing that extreme length, it becomes more palatable. That's my, that's the reasoning behind all that.
Yep. And you are the architect, I am not. But what, in your opinion, happens to the lot design if that part is removed? Is there just like a funky corner on the side? I mean, many lots in the town are like that, but.
Oh, there are many options. I mean, you could do many different things. So you could cut off just a tippy point, you could make it a true rectangle. You could push it one way or the other, closer. So there's a lot of different things to do. But the point being, the pain point is the very long, 28 foot long facade that's by itself not so exciting. And there is already a building that has that and it keeps going forever. That's, and it seems, it's the least useful part of the building, I would assume. So therefore it's an easy fix, makes it a lot better. Conversely, I mean, we're going to not approve it, that's a possibility.
Yep. Do you, yeah, please.
It is correct that the proposed garage addition presents a long facade at the property line, at the street. However, it is stepped back from the street in a way that allows us not to put a fence along that portion of the property line. And instead, we're proposing planting there that would actually give a feeling of depth right at the street and provide more green landscaping at the street. If that triangular portion of the garage were to be removed, it would be likely that the proper solution would be to put a fence across that part of the property. And I feel that the proposed proposed garage actually gives a sort of greener, more welcoming, deeper amount of space there at the street that would be a nicer experience for people walking along the street there and a better facade for the property.
I've got a thing for you on that. The rendering shows permeable pavers, so in, that suggests it's a parking space.
Yes, but if you follow along to the left where the triangular portion of the building is.
Do the pavers continue in the rendering?
They continue, there's a, there's a strip of planting between those pavers and the street.
Oh, that's different from the rendering. So the rendering is a.
The rendering might just be focusing on the architecture and not the plants.
Correct. The rendering shows basically a parking spot.
So when we're looking at this other image on the, on the location map, the three, it looks like proposed pistachio, genane trees. How thick a coverage does that provide for the house?
Pretty, pretty good coverage. Those trees are expected to reach a height of 20 feet or so, which is taller than the proposed addition. They have a good full canopy. It is a deciduous tree, so it will lose its leaves in the winter time. But that, that would provide a lot of green presence at the street, those three trees.
Is it a pistachio tree?
It's a Chinese pistash.
So is that a, like, give a nut?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, did you have?
No, no, thank you for clarifying that. The, so the rendering doesn't do the design a benefit because it shows something different.
Yes, would you, would you like to clarify with the architect?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement about the architectural intent of the garage. We are eliminating three storage sheds that have accumulated around the property because there isn't room for bicycles and yard maintenance materials and tools. That corner, although you cannot put a car in it, is great space for all those types of rakes and mowers and bicycles and bags that accumulate trash cans. And as Daphne mentioned, not having to pick up another fence vocabulary along the corner to provide security to the site is an added benefit of that point of the triangle. So we are trying to work with this unification of the site by having the garage reflect the vocabulary of the ADU. These are beautiful materials, cedar shingles, high quality windows, you know, a metal roof. There's, although it is a modern structure, I don't think there's anything that specifically states that new structures in Fairfax have to comply with the specific design, historical reproduction of the main residence. I think in simplifying the street wall, we also then can focus the view through the new trellis to the historic home, which was built in 1912 and is quite lovely. But we really don't have the desire to try to replicate in a sort of false historicism, that type of structure at the front of the site, especially paired with the ADU. I mean, I think that that simplification, allowing the landscape materials to read and soften that and then focus people's view to the main structure was our primary design intent. And we tried to communicate that in the design narrative.
Thank you. I know, I understand the historic reference. Could you clarify something for me before? So there's a discrepancy between the drawings and the rendering, and it's quite important. And I think you might have seen it too. The representation of the garage building and the rendering, the fence and the pavement in front is very different from the landscape drawing. And what I would like you to confirm for me is that the, because if you look at the landscape drawing, the, the area in front of the garage is more or less, in plan, more or less designed as in front of the ADU unit. However, the ADU unit has a fence on the curb side or the property line. And the garage would not have that, even though both have a planting strip. Is that correct? So basically what I'm asking you, the rendering shows a certain way the fence goes and it makes it a sort of attractive space at the street side, I understand that. I cannot read that on the landscape drawing.
I, what I'd like to just clarify is that we intentionally did not show a single plant or tree in the architectural renderings. The intent of those renderings was to show the building materials and the massing and the architectural elements. I think if we had shown the trees, it would have masked quite a bit of that. So there is some back and forth between our rendered and our planned drawings and the landscape drawings. So the intent is that the landscape comply with the drawings that Daphne produced and that the buildings are as you see on these renderings that we produced and.
Right. And so the fence will make that jog. So meaning the, so of course, the garage door itself remains open to the streets. It has to, otherwise you can't use it. But the space to the, I think that's the north, the extension then would also remain. There's landscape going to be there, there's some trees going to be there, but it remains open to the street.
Correct.
And it's not fenced off. Okay, understood. That is a different picture. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like the side is behind a fence where the garbage cans and things will be, right?
I, you know, we've gone back and forth on how to close off that setback. So now, once the garage complies with the 10 foot setback, it's like almost on the property line right now. We do still want to close off that little bit. And so we're just, you know, we do have a little bit of space that we have to close off. So we, you know, still have to kind of cut that access through the side of the garage.
Understood. Thank you. And the reason for all my questioning is that the garage, the rendering really suggests it's a parking spot. That's what's driving it.
Right. And it's not called out as a parking spot.
Right. It wouldn't work with trees. It's very hard to park. Thank you.
Be hard.
Do you want to speak more about the palm trees that Commissioner Swift raised earlier?
I mean, the limited research I did showed that they are, you know, when maintained, you know, a good tree. So I think most of our assumptions are that our homeowners are going to be doing proper maintenance of trees. I mean, you know, every single one of us, if we allow our properties not to be maintained, are, you know, potentially putting them at risk. So I don't, I don't necessarily share the concern about the palm in the sense that I wouldn't, I wouldn't disapprove this application for that, or disapprove the removal or the planting of the palms.
I concur with Commissioner Newton. I think it's clearly applicant is going to be spending quite a bit of money to accomplish this project. And when you're doing so, I think you're invested in the way that it looks, right? And so maintenance, I think, becomes something that is fairly assured, right? And I also think queen palms specifically, you know, there are some palm trees that dead fronds kind of add to their look and appeal. Queen palms are not that kind of palm. When there's a dead palm, I have queen palms on my house. And when there's a dead frond, it's like immediately I want to cut it down because it looks really bad, right? So I would concur with Commissioner Newton.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I think when we are trying to consider what happens if a subsequent owner comes in and doesn't take care of the lot, you know, I think we need to be cognizant of how difficult something may be to maintain. But grass can overgrow and dry out. It's really difficult to plan for and design around just neglect. And, you know, personal, I like the look of palms, but, but it seems like there's at least some general consensus on the design. But I know that the commission has to talk and work through the resolution. Want to make sure that we keep moving on to that. So I know Commissioner Newton has a list. I know Commissioner Swift has comments. And do you want to?
Well, maybe, I think what we think about the plan, I think is important, maybe to wrap it up. I think with the clarification, I better understand what the garage is doing. So this is a difficult project. There's a lot of little things that cringe a little bit. It's congested. It's also a very odd piece of property with nothing really parallel, so it's difficult. But hearing it all, seeing it all together, I don't see anything fundamentally wrong. So I would be inclined to approve it. That's where I'm ending. We have to look at the resolution and there might be other things I just want to make clear.
Yeah, I broadly agree with that. I think there's details on the garage that we haven't talked about, like the back entrance to it. There's another door. And I think that gives comfort to the idea that the frontage would be blocked by trees. And it's not, you know, nobody's going to need to access that part and it really is going to be a wall. And I, I appreciate the difficulty of working in the town of Fairfax lots to balance function and harmony with the, with the town's existing architecture.
So can I ask the rest of the commission then? Because the REZA we have in front of us is denying the requested combined side yard setback variance. So are we comfortable with that?
And just to note, if we're not, we would need to build in and work in findings for it into our revised REZA.
I think the difficulty here is the ADU combined with the old addition of the house are driving it. And those are things that are going to stay. So you can think about alternates, right? You could, but it doesn't make, that doesn't make it any better. That makes this a difficult project, right? If I look at the existing addition, that all comes to, what was it? Three feet close to the pocket line on the rear, the ADU 10 in the front, which is the biggest, biggest volume there. Those are your givens. So wherever you put the garage, I understand why it's there, why it aligns. And there's a detail to the front that I hadn't caught. So that's why I'm inclined to think, well, that is an acceptable solution in this case. But it's just, I'm thinking aloud here. That's just my, where I'm at now. And I'm sharing the other commission's comments about the palm trees being maintained. It's not an odd thing. I would personally not probably pick them. But if they are listed to be, if they're maintained, they are fire safe. So it's a whole separate discussion. I'm not sure that I would be the judge on that.
I mean, I still have a lot of, like, recommendations on the resolution.
Yeah. Just quickly before that, just, I think Commissioner Swift is still concerned about the shade structure and whether or not we want to. about um, the shade structure and whether or not we want to um, not approve a variance of that, which is leaving the resolution as is. Um, and I think Commissioner Swift then has asked us to consider, and Commissioner Jensen seems to be generally.
Well, I'm, I'm not concerned.
Yeah.
With it as it states with not approving that structure where it is to um, need a variance for that. I just want to make sure that we're all aware of the fact that we are within the resolution denying that aspect of it.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to do is just to make that clear. So I'm good with that.
Okay. Then.
I'm good with it either way.
Okay. Commissioner Newton, then.
Yeah. I mean, I'll be clear. I really, I, I still have problems with the design. I hear what the architect's saying about the uh, not wanting to, you know, recreate some false history or anything. But uh, even with the trees, I just think it's, it, it just doesn't appeal to me. So in my mind, when I'm looking at the design review criteria, I think the uh, the addition of the garage's mass to the overall mass of the plane from the ADU from one side of the property to the other is just not something I could live with from, from my position. And I gather that I might be the only one that feels that way on this commission. But um, I do have recommendations if you all don't agree with me as to renumbering this resolution to make it make sense, uh, even though I probably wouldn't uh, agree to it if you guys are going to go that way. So do you want me to go through and make those recommendations?
Yes, please, Dan.
All right.
Before, let me, can I just ask one more question of the applicant? Before we do that? I'm sorry. Um, with the trees in front of the garage that you all are, are looking at it from softening that frontage, what side, what kind of trees and house, what is the size of them that you would put in there to start with?
Uh, you're asking a question about the size of tree at planting?
Correct.
Would probably propose 24-inch box-sized trees. Um, they won't completely cover that facade in the first year, but they will uh, establish more readily than planting a larger tree. So within a year, say two or three years, I think we could expect that the size would be made up and they'd be providing as much coverage as a larger tree if we were to plant a larger tree on day one.
And just um, the 24 box size, what is the height of the tree going in? Just give me a rough.
Yeah, likely for this species, those are going to be about 12 feet tall and about three feet wide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Third time's the charm.
Commissioner Swift, when you're uh, thinking that there should be additional language supporting the partial denial of the side combined side setback, where would you put
Is that not already in the rezo?
Oh, I thought you were recommending some additional findings. Maybe I misunderstood All right. Well, then in that case.
It's in the file.
Are you ready? Linda Neal, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
All right, here we go. I'm working off the one that you handed out most recently. And I want to go back to whatever you're going to do with the design review permit language. You wanted to take out the one or something. I don't care what you do with that one. Do you want to do something on that one? So on page three, there's a section that's.
There shouldn't be a one and the two sentences should be made, the design review, I'm just trying to say that.
All right. So we're just going to delete.
Want to name the title of the person that made the plans and indicate that they comply with the design review criteria and list the section. I'm not sure why I had it in two. It should be one.
All right.
Yeah.
Then you go down after the next whereas clause, there's a conditions of approval. I would recommend you delete the one. The project is approved based on the following plans and reports. I would then recommend you also delete the two. And I would recommend you renumber A as one. And then renumber B as A. Okay?
Okay.
And then C, D, E, F, and G are like bullets or just dots. They're not even, they don't even get a letter because they all fall under A, which, yeah. So C, D, E, F, and G should be bullets. H should be B. I should be C. Three should be D. Four should be E. Five should be F. Six should be G. And then I'm going to pull a little switcheroo on you and have you pull paragraph 16 from Which talks about, oh, no, it's page six, paragraph 16, talks about.
You want me to read it?
Don't do this stuff before the issuance of the building permit. So it goes in this whole section of before the building permit that we're talking about. So that's why I would make it H under G.
16 to BH.
Yes. And then, okay, let me go back to where I was. Paragraph seven becomes your, oh, wait, wait, G, let's go back to G. If we're going to require them to submit three copies of the topographic survey, survey, we should say survey, survey, survey.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Then paragraph seven becomes a two. And paragraph eight becomes a three. And the letters are good, A, B, C, D. Paragraph nine becomes four. The letters are good. Paragraph 10 becomes five. Paragraph 11 becomes six. Paragraph 12 becomes seven. Paragraph 13 becomes eight. Paragraph 14 becomes nine. Paragraph 15 becomes 10. And because we skipped and moved 16, paragraph 17 becomes 11. And then you continue numbering along those lines till the end. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
Before I ask for motion, just want to confirm that after thoroughly discussing, it seems like we don't have substantive changes to the conditions for this project and our changes that would be needed, that would need to be incorporated into the resolution. Are those drafting comments that Commissioner Newton has flagged and that, yeah?
As well as changing the date. On page nine, the foregoing resolution was adopted today instead of last year.
Yep.
I'll make a motion. Um, motion to approve the red light version, red light version, resolution 2025 dash 17 of the uh, resolution to planning commission approving application number 2516. Oh, that's No, I was just confusing. Number 2516 for a conditional use permit, design review permit, combined front rear setback variance and tree removal permit, and denying the requested combined side yard setback variance for the remodel and expansion of the single family residence, construction of a garage structure, two entry arbers, and a shade structure at 25 Marina Avenue. With the addition of uh, a renumbering as proposed by um, Commissioner Newsom, um, and as noted during the commission, and the change of the date at page 25.
I'll second. Linda, can we have a roll call phone on this?
Yes. Swift?
Yes.
Petroni?
Yes.
Jansen?
Yes.
Newton?
No.
Chair Pfeffer?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes uh, with a uh, four to one and this resolution is approved. Uh, there is a 10-day appeals period. The uh, process and information for appeals can be obtained from the town staff. Uh, thank you. Do we want a five-minute break or do we want to move into number three?
I'd go for a break.
So we will take a short break and be back at 9:08. So hopefully we start at 9:10.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Welcome back from our brief break. Before we move on with the agenda, I would like to ask the rest of the commission to consider if we would uh, amend the agenda to hear 61 Balinas, which I think there's only one person, unless I'm mistaken, in the room waiting for this uh, to expedite that unless the commission anticipates uh, that being a longer discussion and we can proceed as agendized.
I can make a motion. Motion to modify your agenda and switch items three and four.
I'll second. Okay. Uh, can we do a roll call on this? Just to.
Just for fun? Okay.
Yeah.
Swift?
Yes.
Petroni?
Yes.
Jansen?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Chair Pfeffer?
Yes. All right. Give the staff report then, please.
The applicant is requesting design review approval to paint the exterior of the building at 61 Balinas Road, white with black trim. The proposed black and white complies with the sign. I meant the design review application regulations and can be issued, oh, the song, no, I'm sorry. I'm tired. Okay. They're painting the building black and white and the sign they're proposing um, is going to comply with the sign ordinance. So staff can issue that permit ministerially. You're not discussing that or considering that tonight. Staff is asking that you consider our recommendation that the door and the trim around the windows above the door be painted in a color to be approved by the planning director. Although the black and white color palette proposed by the applicant is very different from the colors of the buildings on either side and in close proximity to the business, we believe the articulation of the facade could be improved by painting the door and window trim in an alternating color. We recommend that you approve the application for the exterior color change by adopting resolution 2025 dash 19.
Thank you. Did we have any questions for the staff?
I do. So the resolution is to approve this, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right.
And, and we don't, you know, that's what I was trying to say about design. It's all personal taste and so it's like, you know.
Yes, Commissioner Newton.
Uh, did you speak with the applicant about the concerns you had about the color and get any reaction from them?
This was submitted very late in the game, like right before the noticing. So no, I haven't discussed it with him, but I, but I also didn't um, you know, I don't believe I made it a condition. So I just wanted to point out that I think it would improve the way the building looks. I, I'm not, I'm just not a big fan of the black and white thing. That's personal though, just like Mimi said, just my personal preference. So.
Thank you. I open public comment on this item. The applicant.
My name's Lou Tremaine. I'm the manager of the general store. Um, here to address any questions. Um, we think that the uh, we think that the uh, colors we've chosen match with what we've done on the interior and um, are sort of the hallmark colors that we've chosen for the business, um, which is why we went with the black trim with the white. Um, it's very similar to the um, Fox and Stone building across the street. I think it would tie both sides of the um, street together to have the two the same. Um, personal opinion, obviously. But um, you know, I would hope that, that this would be approved. Um, it, it, it's going to be done very tastefully, very professionally. We've, we've had a very nice sign designed that fits with the um, with the town's rec, in town's requirements for signage. And uh, I think that you'll be very pleased with the outcome. And we would just like to get on with getting our full sign up and we can't do that until we have a resolution to the painting.
So I had a question. Um, the door.
Uh huh.
Painted white?
It's white now.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, I can work with the planning director to flush this out if that's, you know, if, if that's what you would like me to do.
Yep.
Thank you so much for coming and talking to us about this. So um, yeah, to me, it, I agree with staff that the black and white, and you know, we, we looked at the design of the, of the businesses across the street when they came before us. And we, I think there was even a change in the code as a result of what we were struggling with there because, you know, we don't want downtown to kind of lose its vibrancy by everybody being all maggie maggie. And from my perspective, I am really not into the black and white, the dull beige, the, I mean, the big building, just a few steps down now across from Elsie Park has black and white. And, and I would hate to see downtown be all bland. And especially with somebody like Lynette Shaw's operation, there's where I think Fairfax should shine and we should get the multi-prismatic personality of Lynette Shaw on the building as opposed to black and white. But my question for you is whether you guys would be opposed to adding at least one more color to that black and white, just to make it pop a little.
Like for the door?
Or I don't know. I mean, I frankly am not a big fan of the black and white, especially when you look at what's across the street, because I think it gets too maggie maggie. And I would love to see, you know, my house, I would love to see some personality expressed by Lynette that shows who she is, but that's just me. Uh, so like I would, I would probably go with like one additional color, but my preference would be, you know, you. would be, you know, unicorns and rainbows, you know, seriously. All right. I'll stop.
Yep.
Are we in a discussion phase now, or no?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else from the public want to make a comment on this? Yes.
Hi, my name is Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I'm not going to speak particularly either for or against their proposed color scheme. I make some notes that I think should be considered. I personally like Commissioner Newton's idea and appreciate the personality of certain homes that are painted particular colors, but I don't believe in forcing that on anyone. I think you've got a precedent problem that other places have been painted white and black in close proximity, and it would be probably a legal issue if you denied this based on someone's preference of color. Considering Fairfax wants to be colorblind and equal to everybody, any colors theoretically should go there on approval. Now, one thing that hasn't been discussed in this staff report that one would only know if one had to maintain properties is that this property is on the faces afternoon sun, and you can see peeling paint right there, right now. So it is better for the longevity of a building to have a lighter color where the sun is hitting it frequently. I've had a conversation with the former head of Tam Paints, and he told me that he's had problems where a good painter had issues on one side of the street in San Francisco, a cooler climate than we are here, where low and behold, on one side of the street, the building's painted black, had problems. Now, there is a trim that is black here, but it not, the bulk of it is white. So I think painting it a light color makes sense, more sense on this side of the street that they're looking at doing something than it does on the other side of the street. But because you've allowed it on the other side of the street, it's pretty hard to prevent doing it here. Yes, I like the idea about jazzing it up, but that's really personal preference, and who can impose that kind of cost on somebody if they don't want to do it? We can only encourage them, I would think legally. That's really all I have to say. I'm not for or against the particular colors. You might allow for some future ability. There's a lot of different whites. They may get to paint at different stores, and the white may vary. You know, however many years ago Benjamin Moore had simply white as the color of the year, and I think the beach chalet has a chalky white that people like, and white may vary from time to time. So it's not just white, there's hundreds of whites. Thank you.
Do we have any raised hands on Zoom?
I do have a hand online. I can only identify as iPhone eight, but iPhone eight, it is your turn to talk. Please unmute and go ahead.
Hi, this is Lynette Shaw. Thank you, Mimi, for the compliment about my unique personality. My concept with the, with the general store was to sort of restore it in more of a traditional outside, like this is a pioneer store. And it was, it's a lovely store, and we've made it like an art gallery in some ways, but also for, as a practical store for people to feel comfortable and, and welcoming. And we have our, our windows are pretty jazzy, but I really like the idea of having the, like sort of the pioneer white with a little bit of black trim. And we have a beautiful sign that Mott made for us. That's a black, white with a black trim. And it is a hot side of the street and the slightly, we have to do an eggshell white, I think, is the color we had. So that was my goal, is to sort of restore it more traditionally, but also on the inside have it interesting and colorful and, and, you know, wild. But that's all I had to, my thoughts right now.
Thank you.
I have no other hands online.
Okay, well, anyone want to speak first?
Oh, Chair, I'm sorry. I do have just another hand.
Yes.
If we could. And this is Charles. Charles, go ahead.
Hey there.
We can hear you.
Just wanted to mention that Lynette was also planning on restoring the tile base along the facade, and so there was an integration going to happen as well along the base that was going to tie back into the historic foundation of the building. That's all I was going to bring up.
Thank you.
And I see no other hands online. Thank you.
Does anybody want to?
So we closing public comment?
I think we can close public comment. I don't think we'll have any other questions for the applicant.
Okay. So I pulled up, and Charles mentioned the tile at the bottom of the store. So I pulled up pictures of the last two storefronts. So we had Sherman's and we had List Fairfax. And they took different approaches because there's kind of unique architecture on this building with, and I'm not sure from an architectural standpoint, what you would call all the windows above the door, but a lot of these had color trim around those. The door matched that trim on some of these, and then there was a third color going around the sides of the building. And Sherman's had the tile at the bottom. So I think, kind of not going all the way along with Commissioner Newton on this, but I do think the design of this building should reflect more colors and to highlight the trim. The commenter mentioned adding the tile at the base, and maybe we should look at that holistically with the design. But I would hope that between the planning department and the applicant can come up with something that is, has a little bit more color on different aspects of the, of the building than just the white and black.
I would agree. In my household, they're longtime fans of Sherman's General Store and happy to see it, similar business coming back to that space. And just looking at pictures of that design, in addition to the tile that Commissioner Swift mentioned, just that window having its own sort of color, breaking, breaking it out. The, the windows with the little frames above the door. Just, you know, I think we're not trying to redo the design here, but giving our input in the event that the commission would like to adopt the staff's recommendation on adjusting this resolution a little.
Maybe I should, I'll weigh in. I do not have a particular problem with black and white. I would not choose it myself, but I understand from the applicant's that it's a theme that they're using inside in their business, so I understand the desire to match that. I think, word one thing, right, adding one color, I think Commissioner Newton brought that up. I think that would be a good suggestion, but because of the purpose of the business, I am not too concerned about it.
Yeah, I mean, just to respond to one of the comments about what gives us the authority to second guess somebody else's design here. We do have the specific authority under our town code to review the exterior color of the structures in certain zones in downtown area. And the reason that we, which we deliberated about a number of years ago, had to do with preserving sort of the vibrancy of downtown Fairfax and not allowing, you know, everybody to paint their exteriors beige and gray and black and white. And, you know, for that reason, I really feel strongly that some additional color is appropriate, whether that's a door or a trim around the trim or something like that. And so my recommendation, I'm sorry, Lou, my recommendation would be to approve this with direction for the applicant to work with staff and have an administrative approval of a third color being added to this design, not dictating how much, where, exactly all those design element details, but allow the applicant and town staff to, to work that out amongst themselves.
And if Lynette doesn't have a problem with that, I certainly don't. And I look forward to working with staff on that.
Yep, thanks. Just to close public comments, so we're not going to be able to respond there, but I think we can move on with our deliberation, and I am broadly in agreement with Commissioner Newton. I am, I'll.
With, with.
I agree with Commissioner, yes.
I was just gonna say with the permission of the Chair, we think that, staff thinks you should look at what it used to look like before with the tile on the bottom and the red.
Yep. So I have this picture. But also agree with Commissioner Jansen on, you know, if, don't want to interrupt the otherwise overall business plan and, and harmony of, of that vision. But I think our staff and the applicant with direction here can come to a happy result.
Yeah, just, you know, to clarify, when I say a third color, I don't mean beige. You know what I mean? I mean actual color, you know? Okay.
And is there a recommendation on restoring the tile at the base of the store as well?
I mean, I think that would be totally up to the applicant. I think it looks beautiful, but I'm not sure we're going to tell them what
Okay.
tile color design they need to do there, right? They, they have a choice of whether they want to do it at all. So let me ask staff then if we're just addressing color now, but there's been a comment as to the desire to go back to the tile around the base of the building. How would that be addressed? Would that be addressed separately, or could that be included in this?
I think you can include language that any exterior color or materials changes will, will be reviewed and approved by the staff for the front, for the facade, you know? The white, the white matches the sides of the building, you know what I mean? But anyway.
You know, that little building down the street that has like the monsters, stuff on the side?
I, I think we're very close to a resolution based on Commissioner's Newton's recommendation, adding a third color, color, color. And I think that will do it. I'd be willing to make that motion.
Yes.
Or maybe Commissioner Newton would like, okay. Pull it up here. Motion to approve Resolution number 2025-19, Resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving design review permit number 25-18 for the exterior color palette for the building at 61 Bolinas Road with the following addition, that would probably be item number four on the last page, on page two, that a third color will be introduced, a third color, color will be introduced in the exterior facade. And staff will be authorized? To, to be approved by staff.
And with that, the understanding is the staff would work with the applicant as to where that third color would be applied in the design, such as around those windows or the door, they would work together to, all right, got it.
Correct. Yeah, I'm not pointing them what to do. They may choose, and there are many options, but we're not, there has to be color in a tasteful way, a color, color.
Second?
Okay, do a voice vote. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Any opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this evening. Thanks. Thank you. And there is a 10-day appeals period. The information on the process and procedure can be obtained from town staff. Thank you. And now let's go to application 2517, 1601 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard.
Thirty. Put my glasses on. The, this project is a proposal to operate a medical use cannabis storefront retail business in conjunction with a cannabis delivery only service from an existing vacant commercial building at 1601 Sir Francis Drake. There are no changes proposed to the exterior of the building and the, and only interior construction required to remodel the inside to comply with State of California cannabis regulations and town regulations. The only changes proposed to the exterior are to repaint the front, the same color, color palette to match the, to match as closely as possible the existing exterior color of the building, including the neighboring space within the same building, top hat cleaners, the erection of a two-sided projecting sign that complies with the sign regulations for business identification signs, and to place some potted plants along the front of the building while retaining the existing potted plants along the north side of the building. The town has never considered the use of potted plants to decorate the front of the building as long as they maintain the required clearance for ADA site landscaping. So there's no landscaping proposed here. They're not changing the landscaping at this point in the, around the top hat cleaner sign, which is a planting bed at the corner. There's planting beds along the side and then along the other side by, by the laundry. You know, there, there's two tenants in the building, so the property owner is supposed to be maintaining that stuff at this point. So therefore, this project does not require the approval of a design review permit. Sign permit can be processed by staff. The onsite parking complies with the requirements of the town code for both, both the dry cleaners and the cannabis business, so the proposal doesn't require the approval of a parking variance by the planning commission. The applicant provided a traffic analysis, which was peer reviewed by the town traffic engineer, and that indicated that the proposed use would actually generate 67 fewer trips to the site than the previous pizzeria that existed there. Traffic study and a traffic impact permit are only required for projects that will generate 100 average daily traffic trips beyond those generated by the previous use. Therefore, this project does not require a traffic impact permit. The only, all that's required from the planning commission tonight is to score the applicant's business permits, submit all information, and operation plan using the criteria set forth in Town Code Resolution number 19-34 that was adopted by the town council. The reason this was set up is when they, when they first opened, they, the council agreed that they were going to have, allow two, two dispensaries. The dispensaries have to comply with the distance requirements set forth in the town code. They have to be a certain distance from any schools, gathering places. They have to be a certain distance from any schools, gathering places for children, tutoring centers. I'll say this for the public, you know, there are different opinions out there of whether the tutoring center there is operating or not. But I left a handwritten note on the front door and asked them to contact me. I mailed a registered letter to where the place that the, that they're listed as living out in the, out in Woodacre. They signed the card and she came in. I said, you need to give us some proof that you're actually operating and, and nothing has appeared. So we do not believe that this is within any of the distances where there, where a cannabis dispensary would be prohibited because of its proximity to a place where children gather. And people have expressed concern about it being too close to the high school. But they're well over the 600 feet away from a school that's required, you know, where they're not allowed to be. So, um, anyway, so I have little voting forms for you, if I can find them. If I haven't lost them. Here they are, which I'm going to pass out. And hopefully we've all looked at the information. So we're recommending you could take a minute if you want to go through it and write down your scores and then I'll collect them and give them to the planning director who will tally them and give you a number. And then you can either make a motion to approve the resolution scoring of the project or I guess you have to make a motion or you could decide you don't want to approve it, I guess. Well, either way, it's going on to the council, but the council asks that you provide a score and then they're going to re-score it.
Yes. Commissioner Swift, you have a question?
Well, I was just going to say that I think we have, at least I do, questions for staff on this before we get to that point. And I think it'd be good to go through those. And just as kind of a, kind of a history, we had an application that came to us in 2021, which had the preliminary scoring, because that's, we make a recommendation for that piece of it to the council for the business permit. We also at that time, and there are differences between these two applications, but for that one, we also reviewed a formula business conditional use permit, design review permit, and a sign permit for recommendations, because all those would be recommendations to the town council. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. My questions for staff, and you sort of, kind of alluded to it when you mentioned the high school. The staff report identifies the distance requirements in the town code for tutoring centers and daycare centers, but it didn't spell out. And there were questions and comments that we got as far as the high school. So you sort of reiterated that, but the distance to a school is 600 feet. So as you said, this application is further than 600 feet from the high school. So I just wanted to make that clear. Question that came up for our planning director at a prior town council meeting when there was discussion about another application potentially coming through, that one of the council members asked staff to get clarification on what delivery is. In looking at our code, our code pretty much says what the state has, which our code defines cannabis delivery as the commercial transfer of cannabis or cannabis products to a customer. And it also includes the use by cannabis retailers of technology platforms that enables customers to arrange for facilitate commercial delivery of cannabis products. So what is commercial delivery? Do you need to go off-site with that delivery to meet the customer somewhere not on the storefront or on the parcel? I just want to get some clarity on what commercial delivery means and also off-site. So if you can address that.
Yeah, I think the concept is that it gets delivered somewhere because if it wasn't delivered off-site, then it would simply be a retail cannabis use. So, so it would have to be ideally to a residence or, or another business. It would have to kind of travel a certain distance to get to a different location.
And then as far as signage, the staff report talks about the sign code and businesses being allowed to signs. But signs are also addressed in 171110, which is our cannabis retail uses. So in there, it says that the cannabis uses code addresses signage and states signage will comply with our sign code, except signage shall be limited to a single window or wall sign, and in no circumstances shall any signage for a cannabis retailer exceed six square feet in area. So when we talk about, and I looked at the definition in the code of a wall sign, and it was any sign posted, painted on, suspended from, or otherwise affixed to or a part of the material of the exterior surface of any building or structure in an essentially flat position where with the exposed face of the sign in a place appropriately parallel to the front of a canopy porch or similar covering structure. So my question for staff is when the staff report talks about signage for this building as coming under the sign code and being allowed to signs, I'm not sure that addresses the requirements that are stated in the cannabis code.
Can you tell me what section you're reading where, where it says it has to be a wall sign?
Let me find that. So 17110 oh four oh. Print D, print five.
I'm sorry, say that again, D five?
Yeah. And then the wall, what a wall sign is, is defined in the sign code.
So there's another section in that, that is a little bit different than that and says that if the sign doesn't comply with the sign ordinance, it has to go to you guys as a normal sign would. But if it, if it's, if it complies, it doesn't need to go to you. So I'm.
But, but it, and, and I guess then I would need clarification on that because it says in there that except signage shall be limited.
It also says notwithstanding any provision of chapter 17064 to the contrary. This would overrule anything in 064 that was different.
Okay, so what you should probably do is ask the applicant if he's, I believe he's willing to put the sign on the building so that he doesn't have to get a, he doesn't have to get anything from you guys, right?
So.
And that was, and that was my mistake because when I read, I believe that a projecting sign was not necessarily, it's not necessarily something that they were trying to prohibit. They were trying to prohibit the number. The last one was trying to propose two flat signs on the building, right? They weren't going to do either a flat one or a projecting one. So anyway, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Rather than hold it up though, I think he'd rather just put up a complying sign.
And then before we get to the business application, I have a question about why we aren't doing design review as a part of this. And let me, let me finish. Okay, so when I look at, at what's being done on this, and there's a statement in the application that the applicant was kind of going this route of just maintaining what's there so they could avoid design review. But when I look at what is being done, we're adding bike racks. We're changing fencing. The south side realign and repaint window trims in a charcoal color. Proposed north side currently has a three-pane window with a pinkish colored trim. So I don't know if the intent here is to follow these, let me, let me finish, okay? But the binder says, you know, repainting using same paint type and color tones, which would include this pinkish color on the side of the building. And then when I go to the website and I'm looking what was put up on the website, I've got a picture that looks different than what is here. We've got a different window. So when I look at all of that, I don't understand, oh, and then we're changing and repurposing the light fixtures. So we're repurposing to do different things than what they're doing now. We're changing out the bulbs too. I don't understand why those items wouldn't be something that would come to us as design review and could have been done as a part of this process we're going through now.
Okay, so I saw this as a dilapidated building with light fixtures that had been torn apart. And I believe that what he's doing is restoring it to look like what it did and match the other half of the building. And he's not adding any new lights. And when you read wall sign, it's, I'm going to read it just so that everybody understands how it's not exactly that clear, which isn't surprising. So it says, "A wall sign is any sign posted, painted on, suspended from, or otherwise affixed to a part of the material of the exterior surface of any building or structure in an essentially flat position or with the exposed face of the sign in a place approximately parallel to the front of a canopy porch or similar covering structure." So their sign ordinance allows two signs, one flat on the building and one projecting sign. And the intention of the projecting sign was so, you know, they go on to state that you only consider it one sign. And it's to provide on some of these buildings that are set back from the street, the ability for, for traffic going both ways on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard to see the sign, right? He's got quite a setback. It's not like the center of town where the buildings are right up against the street. So I believe this, what's being proposed, does not require design review. He's keeping the same color of the building as next door, right? He's just painting it, repairing the parts that are falling apart. He's putting in a projecting sign, using existing lighting to light it. Parking refurbishment happens all the time and it doesn't require design review. So I don't know if it's, if it's confusing because you just had a project where they literally were trying to change a use in an existing building to a use that was not permitted, you know? And they were redoing the facade and they were moving, you know, the air pump. This is not, I don't believe it's the same thing. But if the rest of you agree that this is a major change and it should have gone to you as a sign permit and a design review permit, then what you should do is you should continue the application, direct the applicant to submit those, you know, submit for, well, we'll come back with a staff report that discusses that, even though he's, right? And then we'll redo the resolution and we'll hear it at the August meeting. But I think you should discuss it amongst yourselves and see if you all agree that you think this requires these discretionary permits.
Well, I, well, I'm not talking about the sign permit necessarily as discretionary. I'm just bringing up the topic of design review. And I'm sure we'll get into discussion on this later, later, later on. And I'll have questions regarding the business application for the applicant when we get to that point. Thank you.
Good.
Yes.
I want to follow up on signage. So the, the drawings show the original pizzeria sign. So.
But there's the other side.
Okay, I'm, I didn't see that.
This one? So there's this pizzeria one and then there's A51. And this is A80. Sorry, just trying to direct Commissioner Jansen to the same. He's got the, he's got the electronic version of the.
Yeah, I'm afraid it, yeah, I'm afraid, I'm afraid the paper one is better than the electronic version.
So right after A50 is A51. So A50 is the current with the most, with the pizzeria sign. And then A51 comes next and then A80.
Yeah, the PDF doesn't, and it doesn't have that. There, oh, six. Okay, so the electronic version is missing a page.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that louder? So you're saying the online version is missing a page?
The online version, yeah, after it goes five, five, oh, one, seven, and then it goes to six.
Okay, thank you.
There's no, A80.
Okay.
But I have it here.
It's just the supplement.
Yes. Okay, I see it. Okay, I see it. I got it.
So on this topic, I was not sure we finished the staff report. Okay, Linda, were you otherwise done with the staff report or?
I believe so.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Potting?
Just a few questions. So the town code has language about radii for schools, for tutoring centers. And it also speculates or stipulates that we allow two cannabis businesses in town, right? Is there anything about proximity between those two businesses?
No.
And so because we have a potential additional application, which would be a move of an existing cannabis outlet to, you know, a building that's two doors down, there's nothing in the code that would specifically.
Not that I know of. Did any, does anybody else found something? No.
Okay. And the staff report also makes a mention of recommending a condition to require some transportation demand management strategies and incentives for staff of the eventual outlet. And I couldn't see that in the resolution. Is that because we're just making a recommendation of scoring to the town council? We're not actually making a.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And has there been any, any discussion of what that would actually entail? What the incentives should be? Or is that just up to the town council to discuss?
It's kind of a, I think the applicant's going to probably have to come up with something. You know, I mean, it's, we were just encouraging them to try to, he, he indicated that that was going to be something he was going to try to do. It was like encourage staff, staff and people visiting to use, you know, public transportation.
Right.
On foot, walk.
Okay.
So.
But maybe, maybe when he's up here, I'll ask him a little bit more detail. But maybe, maybe when he's up here, I'll ask him a little bit more detail.
I mean, maybe you'll get a break on whatever you're purchasing. I don't know.
Okay. And I think that's it for me from staff. Thank you.
Okay. Pretty decorative.
Just wanted to confirm that while our resolution here, where what we're ultimately filling in is the average score from the commissioners. And ultimately, that score goes to the town council as a recommendation. And if our average score was zero or 100, they could have the same freedom to take whatever action they wanted. Okay. And to the extent that we have comments that relate to our scoring on different elements, suggestions, there's no real place in the resolution for that. It's just something that they would listen to and something that the town council could ultimately consider. Because it's not like we're, we're not approving anything where we would attach a condition to it.
They will, you know, we've only done this once before. I think you could change the resolution any way you want. So if you have comments, things you think that they need to focus on or something when they're doing their scoring, I think you can modify the resolution to take your comments forward.
We've got at least one council member here listening to us talk anyway, so.
Yeah. Okay. I had no other questions. Okay, we'll open public comment then. Does the applicant or someone on behalf of the applicant want to come first?
Chair, if I may, just for my own clarification.
Yes.
This issue, we have the three limited time. I'm not timing the original applicant, is that correct? Just everyone subsequent?
Yep.
Thank you for the clarification.
I can be quick. I'm Martin Kaufman and I certainly want to thank you guys. I realize it was information heavy. And if you read it all, I appreciate taking the time. And I'm very grateful for all the encouragement and support I've gotten from the community. And I certainly want to be respectful for anyone here online that has, you know, concerns or reservations about the project. I hope they don't hold back because I'm present. Ms. Swift, to address your concerns about the sign, the way I interpreted the same signage code that you, that you quoted, it's in, it was my interpretation that the Kent side of the building, which is kind of like the dominant frontage, would be the, I guess, the frontage in the plane or the wall of the building that the sign is, you know, in parallel with. And that's why it was designed that way. But again, I'm agnostic with respect to stuff like the, the sign shape and size and exact placement. And with respect to the, the pink window, if it's sentimental to anyone, I don't mind keeping it. Or it needs to be repainted, but it's, and that's why the rendering is just that. It's just sort of a rendering. I didn't, I didn't spend an exorbitant amount of time trying to like capture every detail. I just wanted to do my best to give an example of what the building might look like, cleaned up and repainted and absent of the old pizzeria signage.
And any other general thoughts you want to give, absent us asking specific questions to you?
I mean, no, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to apply to do this in my hometown. I think I'm very well qualified for it. I went, I put an extensive amount of time into trying to find a property that I felt was like the most appropriate for this. There was others, you know, I mean, we don't have a lot of commercial property in town, obviously. And the further you get into Fairfax, obviously, the more traffic burden it creates. I live down the street on Belinus. I deal with it daily. I totally get it. Even, even some of the other properties that didn't have issues with proximity to schools or sensitive uses, it just seemed inappropriate with respect to some. Or traffic was potentially an issue with, you know, turning off of Center or Belinus or Sir Francis Drake, more importantly. And, and parking was the biggest concern that I came across just from experience operating similar stores, which I'm not currently doing. But we look forward to this privilege.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a question for you from Commissioner Newton.
Thanks so much. Yeah, my first is more of a comment that this is just incredibly well presented. And I really appreciate the organization and just really nicely, well done. Thank you. Can you talk to me about the product? And whether it's, I mean, I think California has its own organic version, like organic standards for no pesticides, no synthetic fertilizers kind of thing. Can you talk to us about what the products that you would be selling? You know, how would they match up to that standard?
Yeah, of course. So, so since the implementation of California's new regulations a handful of years ago, there's very strict standards with respect to, you know, pesticides, herbicides and other contaminants. Or they call them PGRs, a plant, plant growth regulator, which would be like the equivalent of a hormone if we're discussing like livestock. The majority of them are completely banned. The testing thresholds in California are tested to parts per billion. Whereas like food, if it is tested, which is often on the honor system, unfortunately, it's parts per million, so it's an order of magnitude more stringent. I was a cultivator for a long time. I go out of my way to source products that are grown to organic standards. You can't currently get organic, official organic certification for cannabis because of conflicts in the law. There are plenty of producers out there that go well out of their way to use best practices. And that's very easily confirmed, all products, whether they're, you know, refined into edibles or just flour. They, they have had to pass through one of the state's licensed testing facilities prior to even being available to a distributor who could be someone who would vend them to the dispenser itself. So legally, legally, there's nothing I would be allowed to even sell that hasn't been confirmed by a third party to be pesticide free.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking that is because of all parts of a business, the Fairfaxian nature of it, I think, is gonna have to be the purity and the, especially when we're dealing with a medical product, the absence of, you know, chemicals and everything. That's the way we, we are consistent with this community's sort of vibe. And I think that's one of the, the things that we have to think about in the, the scoring here. The other question I have for you is whether or not you are a small business.
I would think so. It's just myself, I'm not currently.
I think you are a small business. There we go. And can you talk about locally sourced? Are the products coming from far away? Are they, I mean, what's, what are we talking about in terms of local sourcing?
So by law, there's no products I'd be able to distribute that aren't created and produced and originally cultivated within California. Beyond that, there's unfortunately not too many producers in Marin County. There's none that I'm aware of that are licensed or permitted in Fairfax. Within the greater Bay area, we're very lucky to have some very, in my opinion, high quality products and brands that have been around for quite some time now that create popular products that I think are popular for good reason. They have a good efficacy and a good rapport with, with patients. The further north you get, you get more opportunity, you know, Mendocino County, some of the other counties north of here, Sonoma County as well. There's a lot of cultivators that are very proud of their organic practices with respect to indoor cultivation. You know, it's very prominent in the East Bay and Southern California. There's not too much of it in Sonoma and Marin County. But to be, to answer your question, you know, I would pride myself on being able to source as locally as possible. But that, that does typically drift into Sonoma County and Mendocino and Alameda County. And there are some very cool products, in my opinion, that, that are very, you know, popular, that have good, you know, medicinal value, that do come from Southern California. And I would be inclined to include those as well.
Okay, and I apologize, you may have already said this. How long have you lived in Fairfax?
I've had my home here for 15 years now, but I've lived here off and on outside of that as well.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Yes, Commissioner.
Questions for you. In the package, there's a certification section, which you signed, but you didn't date it.
Okay. I, I thought it was for, I wasn't sure. I think, I believe I dated the original copy that was submitted. There, there's seven copies that were submitted to the town and I was instructed to date one of them. So I'm not sure if that's one you're holding.
Okay. And my question just goes to, we're basing our scoring on what's in here. So, you know, my assumption is this really isn't going to change. Or at least that's not your thought, that this is going to be the plan going forward. So I just wanted to be clear from that.
There's obviously the confines of Fairfax's ordinance.
Right.
The state's ordinance and built in code and stuff like that, right? So I would never attempt to exceed those rules, right?
Right, I was just thinking, looking at it from the business.
For example, with respect to hours, right? I might reduce them if demand is lower or something of that matter.
I'll have questions on hours for you, too.
Okay.
I know you have a long history in the industry. Are you involved currently with any other business or have an ownership in anything else at this point in time? Or is this?
I have a couple of small passive investments, like in, in other cannabis, like companies. Not many of them are thriving at this point. California's industry's kind of hit a rough patch the last five years or so. I do have a farm in Santa Barbara County that's not currently, I'm not currently farming it. I live up here with my young daughters. But, but I do have a, I still hold a land use permit on a property I own with a residence down there. That, that's not my primary residence. I don't live there. But I'm not, I'm not farming it. I don't, even if I were to, it's not like, that would be the only product at the store by any means. And then I am consulting on a project in East Africa, but I'm not like a majority owner and it's not a huge time suck.
Okay. Have you ever worked in a dispensary, like being on the floor?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So hours and days of operation. Is the plan to have the storefront open seven days a week, nine to nine?
With the exception of holidays and, you know, Fairfax parade, might be an inappropriate day to be open full time, stuff like that.
Okay. For, there was information that was confusing in the binder as far as when deliveries were going to be made. There's one section that says, I think this is in Appendix G, talks about delivery drivers operating Wednesday through Saturday from 12 to 6. But there's another reference in Appendix I that talks about deliveries operate seven days a week, 10 to 8, with pausing on weekdays from 3 to 6 to avoid some of the heavier traffic. So can you address the plan for delivery service, days of the week and times?
Yeah.
To clarify that?
At maximum, I would intend to operate the delivery, you know, starting at least an hour later to certainly avoid contributing any of the morning traffic and close it at least an hour before nine typically. As far as dispatching goes, just to give drivers or the driver adequate time to return. I don't anticipate it necessarily needing to be seven days a week. So it's likely we would end up scheduling, you know, just four days a week, for example. It, in my experience, is something that would go, that would evolve, you know, as demand dictates. I would, I would prefer to reserve the, you know, privilege to operate seven days a week within those hours. And I would intend to pause, you know, midday because you just kind of end up sitting in traffic. And I certainly don't want to be contributing to any of that in town.
Okay, and in your code of conduct, there's a daily purchase limit.
That's correct.
Is that both for adult use and medicinal?
Yes, but they're, they're different thresholds.
Okay.
That's dictated by state law.
Okay. And do the general manager and assistant general manager also serve in a security role? You talk about in there when you open and close that you have two staff members doing that, but then there's also a security?
So for security, you would typically close a store of this nature with, with two persons. So one person isn't by themselves leaving at the end of the day. Although in my opinion, we're very fortunate to live in a safe community. And I think these days, they're not, these types of businesses are not like a, a big security risk. So it's not my intention to have onsite security. It is, there's a process by which you can get a security guard card for any, any employee or myself. I've held them in the past. So you are technically a licensed security, security guard, so to speak. But it doesn't need to be a uniformed guard. It's my intention not to have uniformed security at the site. I don't think, I'm of the opinion it wouldn't be, I don't think it's necessary, most importantly, to enhance safety and security. And I personally don't think it'd be a good look for the town.
So for the opening and closing, you have two staff members. Are they the only ones there or is there a third person?
No, the intention would be the other, they're the only ones.
Okay, that seems a little different than what I read in here. But green business practices. Do you intend to obtain a green business certification?
I gladly would. I just renewed my organic certification down south for other crops. It's, it's a very small footprint, so it's, the juice isn't necessarily worth a squeeze. But I certainly don't intend to be frivolous with electricity and stuff like that. And there's no.
And you have some things.
No gas there or anything.
You, you're already looking at some things that would fall under that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But then it's just a matter of actually going through and applying to get the certification. Okay. And you spoke a little bit about the products and the range where you would be sourcing from. And that you prioritize organically grown cannabis from farms within 150 mile radius. What percentage, if you can say, of your products would be organic?
I mean, technically certified organic. I don't, I don't know that many of them are that. But just from my experience in the industry, there's, I'd say, two thirds of at least the flour that's sourced. The, the product comes from farms that are known for their practices and their, and their best practices, in fact. And then when it comes to, you know, consumables like edibles and vape pens, it's common nowadays that producers will take the, you know, the cannabinoids down to an isolate form and then reconstitute, it's not the correct word, but it becomes less relevant at that point. Because you're doing, you're, you're dealing with a pure form of the, you know, the cannabinoids and then, and then adding other ingredients, whether it's an edible or otherwise. But the majority of them would be my intention.
Okay, I think those are all the questions I have.
Yeah.
I did look at the plant side, looked at your security procedures. Could you walk me through a scenario and what you would do? So let's assume there's, you have two staff in store. A middle aged guy walks in, has no doctor's prescription, but he wants to buy something. What, what's gonna happen?
We would provide him with information that he can take home and respectfully tell him he's not allowed past the lobby, if you want to call it that.
Okay, and he insists, he's, he just wants to buy it. He wants to pay extra. So what happens? It escalates.
We would insist not. If they were unruly or, you know, God forbid violent, like we would, you know, notify the police.
So if it gets really threatening, you have, you, you directly switch to the, to police to get law enforcement on site?
I wouldn't feel comfortable instructing staff to, you know, physically engage with, with someone. But I mean, I would, if, if they felt unsafe, you know, the, the doors to the interior beyond the lobby would be locked or buzzer controlled, right? My, typically in the past, I would, if old staff, they just, you know, go, go to a place where they feel safe, somewhere outside. And at that site, fortunately, it's very open to the public.
Right, yeah. So the reception desk is in the front area, so you lock down the rest of the facility.
It's, it stays locked essentially, like so. So this was the lobby, like that door isn't, you just don't shove it open like a receptionist or someone who can view, you buzz them in basically. It's not, it's not that aggressive where it's like buzzing them like a jail, but you buzz them in. So it's locked, so they wouldn't be able to just say, oh, screw you, I'm, I'm shopping anyway.
Right, right. And so the only, you have the, you have the, you have that particular person in the lobby plus one, some, one person behind the reception.
There'd be the person, you mean the?
He walks in, right?
The customer plus the?
There's a customer and there's one staff. There's a customer and there's one staff member behind the reception.
And the, the, the sort of SOP for that type of incident would be, you know, to say, you know, just try to de-escalate. If you feel unsafe, you know, again, the doors to the interior and the remaining staff and any customers that may be inside are, are locked to that person, right? Unless they're gonna try to sledgehammer through a wall, which I don't
No, I'm just, just
And for example, if, if you attempted to enter, the staff should be trained and know to be exiting the space and say, oh, I'm sorry, sir. Do you mind not going in for a moment? Right? So, so other customers aren't going in and then being stuck in a, a reception area with a crazy person, for example.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo the, uh, the comment we got from Commissioner Newton about how sort of well thought through your application was, the sort of attention to detail. Just one quick question on my end. I appreciate the inclusion of six bicycle parking spaces. I think that's great. And I think that's a great option for retail customers. But for employees, I was just wondering if you guys had thought about or if you're, if you're willing to think about the inclusion of interior bike parking for employees. Um, I know space is tight, but maybe something wall mounted just to, you know, get folks over the hump of knowing that their bike is a hundred percent secure. And so biking to work is a, is a really solid option.
Definitely. So there, there's a side lot kind of towards the, the deeper Kent neighborhood. It's like a, a small side yard. There's no landscaping there. It's sort of a dilapidated patio I intended to clean up. And, uh, you know, the owner, if I, if I, the owner's totally fine with me putting stuff like that there. Like bike parking and a, a bike rack. I, I don't imagine someone's gonna jump a five foot fence and try to haul off a e-bike or a bicycle, but
Sure. You, I mean, you'd be surprised.
I was gonna say, yeah. I'd leave it at staff's discretion if they want to, you know, chain their bike up back there. But there's plenty of room for it. It could fit way more bikes than we'd ever have staff.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, just one question for you right now. In this security plan, it mentions both the titles of a general manager and a security manager. And are those going to be the same person? Or because, you know, the staffing plan is a general manager and four employees.
Of course. So the, like the assistant manager and the general manager, which would be myself, would be very versed on security procedures. That security proposal itself was written by like a very professional third party who often does very large style facilities. So with respect to a much, much smaller store of the size, it's, he wanted to be more comprehensive and encompassing and within reason. He, he's someone that's always a resource, but, but the intention is not to need a, you don't need someone in a back office like watching cameras. That can be easily done remotely these days, which is what I would typically do.
Great. Thanks. And then agree a hundred percent on how thorough this is. And you know, you often have, uh, I'm a transaction attorney, so I deal with this stuff a lot. And you often don't have people actually file for their foreign entity registrations or their D. People will be operating for a decade without a DBA that they should have had. But what I did not see in here, I saw the surety bond that's required by the state cannabis board in your business plan, and maybe I missed it. There isn't a discussion of, um, business insurance, operating insurance. And I know, um, right now the LLC is set up so that you're the sole member and it's not no other requirement to have it capitalized. So just, I want to know what the plan is to have either insurance plan or like a capitalized entity.
So as far as capitalization to, to develop and upstart the business, I have adequate capitalization personally for that. With respect to like business insurance, like it's, it's mandated by law anyway. I believe it's a million or two million now liability insurance for customers or, or products and stuff like that. So, I mean, for, for me to obtain, I would just be getting a quote from a broker and you'd have a declaration page in there, but it wouldn't have been a binding. I, it wouldn't have made sense to pay, you know, five thousand dollars on a large policy to, to submit respectfully. But by law, I'll have to have that before I can get my license from the state.
Okay. And that's separate from the, from the surety bond?
That's correct.
Okay. That's it. Thanks.
And another question on delivery. So where do you plan to deliver to? Is it anywhere that you get, um, customers from in Marin County? Have you thought about kind of the delivery circle?
In practicality, I wouldn't want staff like crossing the bridges. By, by law, you could effectively go anywhere where it's not forbidden, but I, I don't think it's, it's not efficient to, you know, go into San Francisco or you probably have a hundred of these things, you know?
So just within Marin County is what you're thinking?
Yeah. I mean, unless there's some, you know, a rare customer that really seems to want us to dabble into Sonoma County or something like that. But it, I, again, I don't think it'd be, I don't think it'd be practical. And we'd probably be able to just recommend an, an alternative, you know, service realm that's better located.
Okay.
Thank you very much again for the thorough application and your responses tonight. I think we are ready for public comment generally. If anyone in the room wants to come and speak, we'll take those comments now. Thank you.
Hi there. Um, my name's James Nicholson. I live within about a quarter mile of the proposed location. And I, I just moved to the area within the past year. And, um, yeah, I want to, um, wish the applicant the, the best of luck. It sounds like a very well organized application and, um, and I, I do hope that they're able to open their business in Fairfax or in the area. My, my concerns are with the location that's being proposed. And since we're, we're, the commission's here today to do the, the scoring, I thought I would try to restrict my comment to the scoring criteria that are, are laid out in the, the bylaws. And what, there wasn't a ton of room, I think, for, um, in terms of public comments. I know it's law about, about the application specifically, but, um, there was mention of whether the application and the, and the business are with, um, the impact on the, the town values of, of Fairfax. And I think with regards to the location being proposed, being that it's such a prominent location on Sir Francis Drake, it's almost, uh, more prominent than the town sign for Fairfax when you're coming into the town. And I think that, um, making that location a marijuana dispensary does define sort of de facto, have a, have a, an impact on the, what people see as the town values of, of Fairfax. Being such a sort of almost flagship prominent location. And so I think that there is room for a dispensary in Fairfax. And, um, I think it doesn't necessarily need to be in such a prominent location that will sort of say to people visiting our town, um, that might expect a nice restaurant or a bakery or, or something in that location that, that might be more welcoming to sort of a greater number of people. That I think it is sort of a, um, an endorsement of, um, you know, marijuana and dispensaries to have it in such a prominent location. And so I think, um, that's a sort of my main concern. And the, the other concern is with sort of just the prominence of the location is that it would kind of increase the opportunity for kind of, you know, young people to have access to that sort of thing. And I think given, you know, that, um, they're so much more likely these days to be using vapes and e-cigarettes and the growing number of research showing the, um, heavy metals and lead contamination being ingested. That's a big concern for me. The prominence of this business sort of being at, at the entrance of Fairfax. And so I would ask the applicant if they could comment on how much, uh, e-cigarette and vaping products will be sold at that location, um, just and given the sort of public health concern there. Or maybe it's just going to be sort of more organic leaf bud type products. So thank you. That's my
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, my name is Kelsey Fernandez. I'm the executive director at Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships. And I actually had the opportunity to speak with the applicant and was happy that he is really acknowledging that precautions need to be taken when we have a cannabis business storefront, um, in that location in the way that it's going to impact youth. The one thing I did want to call out in the application is that the data around Marin youth use is inaccurate. The application states that Marin youth have the prevalence of use rates that's lower than the state and national average. And that is just categorically untrue. Unfortunately, if you look at the data that underneath the graph on page 77, it's the California Healthy Kids Survey. What's cited is the 2017 to 2019 data. And for that year, Marin County rated number one for youth cannabis use out of all 58 counties in California. So we were the top for that data collection period. And for decades, we just have this very persistent problem of underage substance use. And I just want to make sure that when we're looking at this, we're just clear and honest and transparent and accurate about what the data actually says. In addition to that, Tam Union High School District is the highest, has the highest youth use rates of other high school districts in Marin. So we're talking top of the top in terms of the prevalence of youth cannabis use in California and in Marin County. And Fairfax is the only jurisdiction in Marin that does allow a cannabis storefront. So I was encouraged again, speaking with the owner, that the system that he's using to scan IDs actually is going to become even more effective once we have the real IDs. And so that's a problem that hopefully we'll not encounter a lot is kids coming in with fake IDs. Unfortunately, any 18 year old that's a senior in high school can legally get a marijuana, medical marijuana card. It's not easy and there's really nothing preventing that student from coming in and buying a lot of product. My understanding is they can buy more product daily than even somebody that's purchasing recreationally. And so, um, there is a track and trace system. It would be nice to be able to know, to work with schools, to work with White Hill and to work with Archie Williams and other schools, to be able to actually see if confiscated product does trace back to this location. Unfortunately, it could be something that's happening legally. But it's just one of those things, one of those unintended consequences is that when you do have a store that's prominently placed in a community like ours, it just makes it that much easier for young people to access the product.
I'm sorry. Do you just mind, uh, we're at the three minutes, just finish your
Oh, I am so sorry. Okay. Um, I'm very tired. Um, yeah, I just, the last thing that I want to say is that, I also appreciate that in the application, that the applicant offers to donate money to organizations such as ours. But I was really surprised to see Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships in that application. It's not something that we talked about previously. And even though we don't have a formal policy yet, our board has unanimously decided to pursue a policy that we do not accept any money from tobacco, alcohol or cannabis businesses. So what I would like to ask the applicant is what we really, really need is to just have no sales of youth appealing products like the cookies products that clearly target kids. And the second thing is to restrict sales to low THC products. So that would be 10% and lower because there's no evidence that over 10% THC has any medicinal value. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Hi, my name is Melissa Wallstrom. I'm a local parent here with children, both in Ross Valley School District and the Tam Unified High School District. I'm a highly active volunteer in both districts. I'm also the program coordinator for Let's Talk, which is part of Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships. And tonight, and in regard to this application and so much talk about, mentioning about wanting to care about the safety of children and youth. I just wanted to share this 2021 Tam Unified High School District resolution and to bring attention to the TU HSD Board's opposition to cannabis storefronts due to the current high rates of cannabis use and further risks to students. I'm not going to read all of the statements, but I just wanted to point out a few because these are points I would like to make. So this again is a resolution from 2021. Whereas the Tamalpais Union High School District is committed to the successful and positive futures of our youth and their health and safety. And whereas cannabis is addictive, particularly for adolescents. And whereas more teens report using cannabis than tobacco in Marin County. And whereas Tam Unified High School District ninth and 11th grade students report increased use of cannabis across six years of the California Healthy Kids Survey data from 2012 to 2018. And whereas cannabis use is harmful to the adolescent brain, affecting parts of the brain that influence pleasure, memory, thinking, concentration, sensory and time perception and coordinated movement. And whereas students who are frequent cannabis users are 60% less likely to complete high school, 60% less likely to graduate college and seven times more likely to attempt suicide than non-users. And whereas cannabis use is associated with additional health risks such as respiratory illness, heightened heart attack risk and immune system suppression. And it continues to go on, watching my time. I do want to state this one. Whereas in August 2019, the U.S. Surgeon General issued a report reviewing THC concentrations found in dispensaries in the United States, finding average concentrations between 17.7% and 23.2% in plant forms and between 23.7 and 75.9% THC in concentrated forms. The Surgeon General reported that the risks of physical dependence, addiction and other negative consequences increase with exposure to high concentrations of THC and the younger the age of initiation. Higher doses of THC are more likely to produce anxiety, agitation, paranoia and psychosis. And again, this, um, like I said, was signed in February 9th of 2021. And I just find these points extremely important. And here at Archie Williams, the, from the California Healthy Kids Survey of 2021, 22, one out of every three 11th graders reported using care, uh, reported using marijuana in the past 30 days. So our rates are really high and we really need to be aware of what we're doing here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy. My name is Dan Eckard and I moved here from Berkeley two years ago. And I, one of the first speakers spoke about the location of this new proposed marijuana dispensary. And he is correct. As you drive into Fairfax, this will be one of the first things you see on Sir Francis Drake. And I really fail to see why you need two dispensaries located within less than a block of each other as you drive in, both of which will be visible as you drive in and out of Fairfax. According to an article by KQED, there is in fact, um, an increase in crime around marijuana dispensaries. And I noticed in Berkeley, they all have a burly guard standing outside. And I think that's what you're going to need here. And with the parking problem you already have there, that's going to be another car there. I don't think all the employees to this place will be carpooling or riding their bicycles. I also noticed that in the past, you denied an application to another marijuana dispensary because parking was behind the building and quote, people who are up to no good would be difficult to spot. So I don't see the idea that people who are up to no good making them a little easier to spot because they're on Sir Francis Drake is a very good idea either. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello there. My name is Laura Phillips and I've had a house about seven houses down from Morrow's Pizza for the past 27 years. And I can tell you that, you know, what you're voting on here in terms of the report, although it looks like there was a lot of time put into it. It's making pretty broad assumptions that I can tell you for a fact because I live seven houses down from there and I walk every day. Morrow's Pizza never Morrow's Pizza never had anybody there. It was, you know, they're making assumptions of a drive-through and all this kind of stuff and saying that there's going to be less traffic with this marijuana dispensary. That's absolutely ridiculous. So there's definitely going to be more traffic. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that these maps that they have say right here, disclaimer, this map is for informational purposes only, accuracy is not guaranteed. And we're talking about a daycare. I walked by both of those. The daycare center is full of kids, and the border that's drawn on this inaccurate map is practically touching the Morrow's Pizza parking lot. So you're talking about, you know, little technicalities. You're worried about the color of the paint of a building in downtown Fairfax, but you're not worried that this is like right next to within a technical, who knows if this map's even true? It might be within 300 feet of a daycare center. And the tutoring center that you have completely dismissed has a brand-new sign out in front of it. I've sent a picture in, I don't know if you guys got it, but I did send a picture in. They have a viable, I called while we were waiting for this meeting, they have a viable phone that redirects you to their website and their email. I sent an email to them. There's a tutoring center, and until you can absolutely prove that there's not, that's one door down from the Morrow's Pizza. So in addition to that, as many people have mentioned, there's already going to be a marijuana dispensary two doors down. Is that really what you want to be known for in Fairfax is the Marijuana Dispensary Capital? Because I find it ludicrous not to mention that you're plopping two marijuana dispensaries in the middle of really a neighborhood. This isn't downtown. This isn't, there's a few buildings on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, but that's a neighborhood. And we all live in that neighborhood to be safe and not have two marijuana dispensaries imposed on us. So I'd like you to really consider that when you're voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Carney, 48-year resident of Fairfax. Obviously, an old hippie. This is a framework I know well. For the past 20 years, I've been dealing with a fallout of a drug culture impacting young people adversely. Kids were better off prior to legalization than they are today. They were healthier, there was less use, and less damage. When Gavin Newsom pushed legalization, it became corporatization. And corporatization encouraged increased THC and addiction. And the best way to maintain your customer base is to addict them during the years that their brains are developing. So legal cannabis, wherever it lands, normalizes cannabis, decreases perception of harm, increases TH levels, promotion of cannabis targeted to children. Edibles are hospitalizing children. Psychotic breaks. I have 11 young people I've worked with in the past 10 years who have had psychotic breaks because they were coping with stress with high THC. Carbonoid hyper, I don't know how to say the word, puke. Butt puking. Who knew? And 18-year-olds with a medical card? They're the most popular kids at school. Guess why? We are going to be the pot capital of Northern California if we open up another dispensary.
Thank you. Another.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I want to point out that the packet that is outside seems to be thinner, fewer pages than is what's posted online. I'm not quite sure why that is. I haven't read the 100-plus pages, maybe 170-something pages, all of them anyway, although I've read a good bit of it. This seems to, please inform me and members of the public whether or not there's any discussion of how the town has come to, whether it's state law or whether that's something decided here, the decision basis to allow for two dispensaries. Obviously, we're here tonight, so it must have been decided, but I don't know that there's been any discussion of that. Maybe now is not the time to rehear it, but it should probably be mentioned to the public so they understand this. It sounds to me like this is likely a legal issue as to whether or not they are entitled to do this or not. I'm not going to introduce my personal views here. I'm sure each of us have all of our personal views. It was a very professional presentation, but as I said, each of us probably have our personal views. The question's going to be one of legality, and maybe without the town's attorney here, maybe the proper place to decide this is at the town council meeting with the town's attorney guiding things. But it seems like, on one hand, there's information that hasn't been discussed tonight about how this is actually permitted to have a second one. And then I would ask, if it is permitted to have a second one, how does the prior decision to prevent the other second one factor into this? Thank you.
Thank you. We are ready to move to Zoom.
I do see a few hands online, and the first will be Ally. Ally, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ally, and thank you so much for this opportunity to share my concerns regarding this. I work in both the substance use prevention field for middle and high schoolers and also the substance use treatment field at a residential rehab here in Marin. And the most typical diagnosis for our younger residents is cannabis use disorder and those other, someone else mentioned, cannabis-induced psychosis and CHS, which is cannabinoid hyperemesis syndrome, which is extremely violent vomiting, and it's purely from cannabis. So, you know, in my work, I see firsthand these really extreme harms that today's high potency THC is causing, and particularly for kids and teens and young adults. So I'm also very familiar with some of the more harmful actors in the cannabis industry who blatantly target youth with high potency THC products and, for a number of reasons, just face continued litigation for a whole range of unethical business practices. And one of these cannabis companies is Cookies, which I see is, you know, in reading Martin Kaufman's plan, he references his work with Cookies and co-developing Cookies in Oakland. So this makes me very concerned. Cookies is consistently being called out for their blatant marketing to kids. They actually, from the very beginning, they tried to, they had the name Girl Scout Cookies until they got a cease and desist letter from the Girl Scouts. So they're marketing their cannabis as Girl Scout Cookies. So that's just one of the ways cannabis is targeted, I'm sorry, Cookies has targeted kids with their marketing. So, you know, they sell high potency THC products with very youth-friendly names like apples and bananas and cereal milk. They sell like smell-proof backpacks for minors that can use in school. So this partnership, Martin Kaufman's partnership with Cookies really raises a very big, big, big red flag. And so for this reason, and the reason that actually many others have shared tonight already, I hope that the city council can please pause on this to allow a closer look at this, so that Fairfax can continue to make, you know, our youth's health and safety a top priority. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you considering my perspective.
Thank you.
And next, we have, I believe it's Holly. Holly, forgive me if I mispronounced your name.
Yes, thank you. I'm a Fairfax resident of 18 years. I spent my life savings to buy a house here and raise my kids. I share the concerns that the speakers have already mentioned. I don't think it's the best message to drive into town and have, you know, pot capital of Marin be the first thing you see when you drive into Fairfax. It used to be, you know, Pantry Vias, and I just question whether that's really the best representation of our town. I live just a couple blocks from Morrow's. You know, my kids had to walk and take the bus right across the street from there to go to White Hill. I just don't think it's an appropriate location. I have security concerns regarding the application. You know, research and analysis is what I do for a living and have for the past 30 years, and I echo Kelsey Fernandez's concerns about the data in the application. It's inaccurate and misleading, and I'm not sure why they chose to use data that's old or compare it to, you know, the most recent national data from a completely different source, which asks the question in a different way. I mean, it's just misleading. I'm looking at the California Healthy Kids website right now, and you can pull up the most recent data. And what that shows is that current use, past 30-day use in Marin is now at 25%, which is more than twice the state average, which is 12%. Okay, that's the most recent data. And if you look at the county-by-county comparison, Marin's fourth, the fourth-highest rate of all 58 counties in California right now. And if you, I also got ahold of the report from Archie Williams with their most recent data. They're at 33% past 30-day use. So the data in the, the data cited in the report is just, is just wrong. We do have, you know, I've done focus groups of kids in our middle, in our middle schools, Hall Middle School, Kent Middle School, Archie Williams High School. I've done focus groups on this subject with kids, and they've told me, you know, firsthand, you know, if you just find an 18-year-old, you find somebody who's graduated with a card, and that's, then you have your hookup. So I think, you know, pretending like this isn't going to end up in the hands of kids is just wishful thinking. It's just invalid on the face of it. Pretending there's not going to be security concerns, I think also is just, defies credulity. I just, I just think this is, this is something that we need to pause and take more time to consider, because once we allow it, we're not going to be able to roll it back. And I do think it's something that people don't really know what, you know, I don't think they know what they're getting into, and I think we will regret it if we don't take time to thoughtfully consider some of the questions that have been brought up today. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I see no other hands online.
Great, I will. Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up of the applicant?
Yes.
One of the commenters mentioned that there's, that they believe that there should be a restriction on high THC products, and they mentioned over 10%. And then said there was no evidence of medicinal value of THC. Could you comment on that? Of THC over 10%? Thank you.
I'm not entirely qualified to speak to like the medicinal efficacy of the different potencies, but there are a lot of studies out there that do show that people that do, you know, are in need of higher potency cannabis choose it because they need less of it. I believe we spoke on the phone that it, I agree, there should be, I'm glad that there's more products coming on the market that have lower THC, because I know a lot of people do enjoy those, but I don't think it would be appropriate to like not carry products that, in my opinion, do have medicinal benefit, at least to those, you know, adults that prefer them.
Okay, and can you also comment on the orientation of products and edibles for children?
Yes. So the state has pretty strict guidelines as I last read it, that you can't be marketing and soliciting to children. And I did want to clarify, like, I'm not an owner of Cookies. I did own and co-develop the store in Oakland that we shut down last year. I have no incentive to sell their products. It wouldn't be, it would make no difference like which products are sold there. I just want to be very like clear and transparent, like it's not in my interest to push their products by any means. I have no intention to do so.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that line of questioning? So the recommendation from some of the public comments was products with THC 10% or lower. And it sounds like you would not limit your products to that level, correct?
I personally wouldn't. You know, I'm not manufacturing the products, right? So there's just products that have a level of demand, and it would make sense to carry them. There are a lot of very responsible people that, you know, prescribe those products or elect to consume those products. And, you know, whether we like it or not, all of those products are available. If you go on, you Google cannabis, there's probably 20 companies that'll probably deliver here, you know, legally or illegally right now.
And the other part of that question is products that are designed to be desirable to kids, like products that look like candy or products that look like cookies. As far as your thoughts on what you're going to sell, would those types of products also be in the line?
I mean, for example, there are gummies, right? But they're not, by law, you can't have a gummy bear-shaped product. There are a lot of products like that in the black market that are unfortunately prevalent, you know, in our community and others. I would not sell gummy products. They are very, you know, it's a very common form factor. That is very, you know, the mass majority of its use is completely responsible and appropriate.
Sorry. The other question goes back to kind of the signage issue. And would you be willing to change your signage? I know the business name isn't reflective of what you're selling, and you comment on that in your application. But as far as the signage, would you be willing to do some other signage than what is in the proposal?
I mean, I'm open to it. I put a lot of effort into it. I think it looks nice. It's a lotus flower that has overlapping leaves that, you know, could be misidentified as a maple leaf.
Are you talking about the design or the structure of the sign?
Well, it could be both, and it could be the location. I'm just asking if there's a willingness to reevaluate the signage in general.
I mean, if that's like a major community pushback, it's not my intention to ram anything down the community's throat, you know?
Okay, thanks.
One of the commenters mentioned, and I recently read this report as well, on the alarming levels of lead found in kids who'd been using certain vaping products. I think it was specific brands, but are you, are you envisioning-- are you envisioning vape products? I don't know in typical cannabis retail, how much of the business is tailored to that?
In my experience, like roughly 15, maybe 15-ish percent of the products I would intend to carry would be like what would be considered vape products.
Like cartridges?
And other similar products. But to be very clear, like the, God, they call it popcorn lung. There's a lot of like really serious concerns about some of those products that I wouldn't even call it a scandal. It was a very reasonable health concern that came out some years ago. That was entirely the black market. There's a lot of, there's a lot of prevalence of, you know, bootlegging of popular brands, and there's huge brands that are completely illegal. So to restate, none, no products with heavy metals, whether it's flour or a concentrated product like a vape pen can even be sold to me to then resell from that store. Like, those products would be entirely from the black market or potentially some state that doesn't test for those things.
And you may not know this, but hopefully, given your experience in the industry, how long typically are supply contracts locked in for like, I know, for example, like in the wine-producing industry, great purchase agreements are one to two years for lots and things, you know. When you're building your inventory, are you committing to purchasing from the same suppliers for a long term? Or are you flexible? I don't know how.
Yeah, there's a lot of flexibility. Like, there are, you know, distributors and brands out there that try to impose, you know, incentives like that. It's not my experience that's ideal because unfortunately, within the law, you can't return a product to a distributor. Like, you can't say, oh, hey, we didn't sell this. You know, I don't want to pay for it. But they're trying to fix that. So you just have to basically dispose of it if it doesn't sell or if it expires. So my practices would always be to, you know, start with a modest amount of product, you know, see if it's something that's, you know, that goes well. You would typically have maybe like a net 30 on vendors. You might have vendors come every couple of weeks roughly. So to your question, like, it's not at all like wine procurement. It's much more as you need it. It's almost like a restaurant.
Yeah. And then, last question for me for now. I appreciate always seeing labor peace certification in there. You know, it mentions, once a 10th employee is hired, and naturally your business is, right now, five employees, something to consider, you know, adapting as you move forward with the town council, adjusting from 10 to not, you know, I understand to a collective bargaining agreement for four people, unwieldy, but seven or, you know, something that's not double your total envisioned personnel for that location.
I would not intend to restrict my staff. Like, for what it's worth, I've had, in the past, I've had companies that had far more than 10 employees, and they always had the freedom and right to engage with the unions, not once they want to enter into a collective bargaining agreement. I've always prided myself on going out of my way to, you know, pay better than you can get away with paying people. And I got to where I am by people doing that for me. And I've always gone out of my way to try to pay that forward, and I certainly intend to do so in my town.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question for staff?
Yes.
It might be helpful for members of the public, or maybe just me, to give us a little update on the proposed move of the Marin Alliance retail shop. I know eventually it's coming in front of us, but I know the town council also made, had some action. And so could you give us an update on that?
They have not submitted their application yet. They have contacted us a couple of times, and I know they're trying to put it together. So I think that will probably be submitted next week. And the council required that that get a conditional use permit from the planning commission. That was written into the most recent revision that they did. I believe that she's also going to need to apply for a parking variance because that building has very limited parking. And then I'm not sure what they're going to do to the facade, whether it's going to need any kind of design review, you know, permits from you. So I'm expecting that to be submitted next week.
But so in terms of the actual, you know, we're doing scoring here tonight for this proposed business, we don't have to do that for, that's already been.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just quick poll for our commission. Do we anticipate our questions all going to staff from now on? Can we close public comment? Or do you think you may have further questions for the applicant?
Can I ask one more question of the applicant?
Yep.
He's getting his exercise. How do you destroy the product?
So there's a, there's a couple of legal options. You could, you could have a, so it's almost like a hazardous waste company that's certified by the state come and pick it up. With a small store like that, that's not practical. So you would typically, it has to be under the camera system that has to be stored for 90 days, and the state has access to it. It has to be, you'd almost like emulsify it, or you would get it wet, and then it needs to be like a food processor, a blender, or depending on the type of product, you basically mush it with like coffee grinds, or there's a few other materials that the state allows so that it's considered undesirable or inert at that point. And then, at that point, you can discard it just in a normal locked waste bin. Like, but to be very clear, like, we don't, it's not like, oh, this flower technically is expired. I'm just going to fling it into the garbage can and hope, you know, some kids don't jump in there. That would never happen.
So it would go in the normal garbage receptacle, then?
No. So at that site, we'd have a locked storage bin, and the garbage that any cannabis could be in would be locked itself. So expired products would typically get returned to a vendor despite them, you know, not reimbursing for it, unfortunately. But again, destroying product, you are destroying it, basically. There's nothing, it wouldn't be something that can be consumed, and that's by law. And that has to take place on camera in case the state ever wants to audit it, which in my experience, they actually do. Especially if you, if you were to waste like a, anything above a very nominal amount of product occasionally, they kind of flag that as, you know, suspicious.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Can we bring it back to staff and close the public hearing?
Well, bring the discussion back to the commission and close public comment. Thank you.
I have another, I'm sorry. I have another question for staff. I think this, I want this to be very clear. So the tutoring daycare center does currently not have a valid business permit. So they technically.
Correct. Does not have a business license. It has been inactive for some time, and under, we have a very specific definition in the code for what qualifies as a tutoring center. They have to have 10 or more students, I believe, for like 37 weeks. And so it wouldn't qualify today, as even if it were to start operating today, it would not qualify as a as a tutoring center.
Right. And if they, if they would like to start again, they would have to apply for.
Correct. They'd have to get an active business license.
Right. But that would be after the fact. And so I cannot influence it. So that is clearly closed.
Include this application.
Because of that. Okay, thank you.
After the fact, assuming that the council approves the application, I wanted to make a couple of comments about some of the things we heard from the public. Commissioner Swift and I unfortunately will clearly recall the long, long process that the town undertook to identify the specific zones within the town where the cannabis businesses would be allowed. And, oh, God, it was just like, it seems like, looking back on it, it was like a two-year process before they eventually came up with the areas, the specific areas of the town where these specific businesses, you know, the numbers, how many they would allow, I think the top was up to three, you know. And so in opposing the location of this proposal on Sir Francis Drake, where it is, my perspective is, that is over. That is done with. We have decided that. That space has been identified as within the allowable area. So I am not moved by the arguments that this is not a good area, because I lived through that really long process of listening to the public. Maybe some of you guys were there then, complain about the various areas that we had identified, and the council eventually came up with a decision. So here we are now, just scoring based on the criteria. We're not sitting here to decide this location is not appropriate. We are here to score based on the criteria that the town council has set us up for. And so I just, you know, there was a concern that we would be endorsing weed by having a facility on Sir Francis, a brick-and-mortar store on Sir Francis Drake as you come into town. And by the way, we are not considering the other application at this moment. We are only looking at this application. We are looking at this application on its own merits. We are not saying, well, there's this other application that's come along, so we can't possibly, you know, approve this because of the other thing coming down the pike. We're looking at this application on its own. And I would say, in terms of endorsing medicinal marijuana, this town does endorse that. I would say that the difficulties that many people had before medicinal marijuana was legalized in getting access to substances that can really help them was, you know, not good. And from my perspective, I think this town does support providing medicinal marijuana to patients with valid medical cards. So that's my little soapbox for the moment.
I had a question for the commission. I had brought up the issue of a design review permit. Does anyone else on the commission feel that this should have had a design review process?
I listened to, I think the interventions are extremely minimal. Bots, restriping of parking, bollards, I don't think that that would really be necessary. I had not reviewed the sign, but I saw it today here, and it looks pretty small to me, actually, if I see it. So there's no, there's nothing that stands out to me that I think, well, that would be a real concern. So that was my personal opinion. I think effort has been taken by the applicant to, to prevent that from happening, to really make a minimal change. It would barely be different from what it is, what it used to be.
And the rest of the commission?
Yeah, I would generally agree. I would, when it's clear that the applicant is trying to fit their design into our code so as to avoid the cost and expense of a design review process, we don't necessarily need to go looking for extra design review. That being said, that's partially dependent on my understanding that the town staff and the building official would be aware of any changes that exceed the scope of what's currently proposed as something that is not subject to design review. So if they, if the changes started looking much more significant to the facade, there's the opportunity to say, hey, this is unpermitted work. You would need a design review permit approved from the planning commission.
Yeah, I also am not wedded to the idea that we need to review the design here.
Okay. Yes. Yes, please come.
Yeah. So what the planning commission is doing right now is the council, when they set up this process, they adopted a resolution that set up a scoring criteria, three main points, and then they had items underneath it that the planning commission has basically been answering by asking questions from the applicant, right? And listening to what the public has said. So what the commission's doing right now is they're, they're each going through and putting their own grade. It's like the first item is worth 35 points, second one's 35, the last one's 30. They're gonna, they're gonna. You want me to read it?
Just the main one, yeah.
Okay. Like, business qualifications and business plan, quality of operating plan and public benefits. But there's a whole list of things they should consider when they're determining whether, how well the applicant has met the, the scoring goal, I guess, goal, yeah. So, and then the planning director will score them and add them up and average them.
And then they're averaged and put into a resolution, and then this exercise is then reported to the council in form of that resolution that the planning commission will adopt. And then the planning, then the council takes it up based on the, based on the scoring of the planning commission, goes through the same process. So that's the process that's kind of outlined in the municipal code that we're following.
And as I explained in my staff report, the reason they set this up is that they were afraid that when they opened the period for submittals to come in, that they were going to get a ton of applications. But each time they've opened it, they've opened it twice. They've only gotten one application. So.
We need like a pneumatic tube. Okay, the average score is 92.6.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number 202518, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission, scoring an application for a cannabis business permit to operate a combination medical-use cannabis storefront and a cannabis delivery, delivery only.
I'm going to change that title to say delivery only. Retail business from 1601 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard with the clause that says, whereas the commission recommends to the town council that the project complies with the Fairfax Town Code, Title 17, and the planning commission's final cannabis business score for the floor cannabis application is 92.6. And then put a period after that and delete that other part of that. And if we could fill in the business points, business qualifications and business plan points on page two of the reso, the quality of operating plan points and the public benefit points.
Friendly amendment with the individualized average scores as calculated by town.
By staff, yeah. With the individualized scores calculated by staff to be inserted onto page two of the resolution prior to signature by the chair.
I'll second.
I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor? Well. Well, yeah. There's a motion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously. The motion approving resolution number 2025-18. There is a 10-day, is there a 10-day appeals period for something like this? There's not like a, yeah, we're not, yeah, it's a recommendation. We're not granting anything. The, for the public, you know, you can sign up on the town's website for notification of town council agenda meetings so that you see when this comes up and can provide your comments when the town council considers the matter.
Does staff have an idea about timing when this would go before the council, by any chance?
We're gonna try to get it on the next meeting, but we don't really control the agenda, you know? It's, um, yeah.
Yep. Notice. We are through our public hearing items on today's agenda, tonight's agenda. There are no discussion items. Our next item is approval of minutes for the prior three meetings. Thank you.
I have some comments on the June 26 minutes. And my recollection of the 10 O Lima item was that the owner agreed to a postponement of a portion of the decision and he was going to bring it back. And I think the minutes should reflect that agreement. And I don't think they do.
Do we want to adjust those minutes and just bring those back and go on the other ones? Because I want to make sure that we have the right place and the time so that we can mark when we frequently went out to him to confirm and determine the ascent. I don't know.
I, I actually trusted staff would reflect what was, what occurred and then I'd just let them make that change. But if you want to bring it back, it doesn't matter.
No, I'm fine. I'm, I'm happy to review what's.
I promise I'll watch the video again.
Oh, yeah. I, that's what I mean.
Go off my memory.
That's what I have to do to check, to make sure all the last minute comments got it. I'll give us another minute just to, folks want to double check if they have any other comments in the minutes. No, I don't want to proactively keep everybody.
Well, I mean, I think this new format is a lot easier to review in that sense.
Yes. Not, you know, the format that had been in our code for a while. Okay, then we can move on to.
Are we going to approve them?
Oh.
I will move to approve all three sets of minutes with the change I just recommended. Over.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to abstain?
Yep.
On these?
Okay. Motion passes for ayes, zero nays, one abstain. Is there a planning director report?
I think we've had enough for this evening, so.
Yeah. Any other commissioner comment?
Let the planning director sleep.
Yeah.
So I had comments and questions.
Yeah.
During prior meetings, we've had members of the public ask about this. And I know I've sent a request in to get an update, the status of our formula business code. I think members of the public would like an update on where we are with that. We aren't using it right now. So it'd be good to find out if we're looking at revising it, what's, what would be something that would be workable? Because it comes up in this community when we talk about Fairfaxian approaches to things that there's been a long tradition of not wanting formula businesses in this town. So I think we need to get an update, or I would like to get an update. Members of the public have, have questioned it on where we are with that whole concept of using what's in our code, revising it to support what the community wants, where we go from here. So that's one request. And if you all can kind of clarify whether you've got new northern spotted owl nesting updates for this year.
Aaron, she got back to you and said, she emailed you.
Right, but I didn't get a response back whether she contacted somebody and they said there were no updates. So what you have, so if we could just clarify that and bring it back, that would be great. And then my, my last item. So last night at the town council meeting, the general plan, land use and safety elements went before the town council. What they received in their packet wasn't a red line total draft in one product, if you will, for them to look at that and see what was before them. They approved what was presented to them with a comment by one of the council members that perhaps this can all be relooked in six months. But my question goes to, now that they have approved it, what happens next? The documents would have to be finalized. So putting in the changes in there because they weren't given a draft with all of those updates in there. So I assume we would make final elements that would be a part of our general plan. Where does that go then? Do we put it on the website? Do we, how do we inform the public that we have new elements? And included in that is, to the point of being available to the public, the Fairfax library has a government documents section of which Fairfax has in the past, but not recently, kept up to date with things like our current budget and those types of things. So I would hope that, and there was, I don't know if it was in the the safety element or the land use where the matrix said we were deleting this goal or this task because the town was already providing copies of these things to the library. So my question is, from the standpoint of the community, will they be published? And will hard, and that includes for the public, hard copies provided to the library to update the government document section?
Yeah, there'll be, in fact, Diane Batsia is working on it right now. So we should, we should get it within a week, maybe two weeks as far as the electronic copies. And, and we can get them to print a hard copy or two. I think we have just enough budget to do that, so.
Well, I would personally hope that those things don't rest. I mean, I, for me, those things are important to print in hard copies for the community. So I hope we don't look at that from a kind of a budgetary standpoint internally. And it would be great if, once those things are done and including providing a copy to the library and working with the library staff, that perhaps something gets put on the town's website and in the newsletter that those have been finalized and that there are copies at the library.
Yep. Yep, we can do that.
That's it.
Thank you.
Motion, George John.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting's adjourned.
Recording stopped.